We have a
Thank you, Mayor. I have invited one of my favorite artists to perform today. Mackenzie, this is my youngest daughter, so you can play us three songs. Thanks, Mackenzie. So my kids, they're proud of me and at the beginning of the year, we kind of think about self reflection and goals and Super Bowl's coming up, and so I got this quote from Vince Lombardi, coach for a long time, he says, "We will chase perfection and we will chase it relentlessly, knowing all the while we can never attain it, but along the way we shall catch excellence." And so it's cool to watch my kids and also the community and those kind of people, you know, to chase our goals and try to be deliberate each day and in the process, catch excellence. It's cool to see them, okay, and do that as a community, so. Thank you.
Good job. Good job, Mackenzie. Appreciate you. With that, I'll call the city council meeting to order and we'll start off with a roll call as we could with you. Okay?
Hey, Sweeten.
Yeah, me too. So. David Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson, we have planning commissioners here tonight, Claire Schenk and Nicholas Kinska, thank you very much. And we have some city staff here, I'm gonna let you guys introduce city staff.
Levi Roberts, city planner.
Justin Montz, manager.
Tom Dickinson, city engineer.
Cheryl Lawley, city planner.
City recorder.
That was a promotion. And then can you introduce other staff members?
Yeah, please, we got Chip Olson here, he's our streets division manager, Steve Ealeson, our public works director, Talon Beidlow, his office staff, and staff, so.
Anyone else wanna be identified? Please put the appropriate number. Okay, thank you very much. First council, I'd like you to consider the minutes from our fifth of December session, there's also a set of minutes for a closed session that was held, and if you're so inclined, also ask you to consider tonight's agenda.
A motion to approve the December 5th council meeting on a closed session and approve the agenda.
Okay. A motion from Norm, second from Nathan, any discussion on that motion to council? Saying none, let's proceed with the vote, those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Jan Adamus, thank you very much, Cheryl, you do a great job on the minutes, keep up the good work, thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for public comment, so we have some folks signed up, if you haven't signed up, we also add up anyone who would like to address the council. The rules adopted by resolution or on the podium, if you need a chance to read those when you get up there, that'd be fine. And with that, I want to start with Mr. Justin Hobbs, would you like to address the council, please?
Okay, so my name is Justin Hobbs. I live at 465 West, 2850 South, just in Elkhorn Ranch over here. Lived in Nibley City for 25 years. Here in lovely Nibley City. Part of the reason why I'm here is over the past year and a half, I've had four declarations of nuisances sent to my home on various things. July 23rd, 2023, I got one for construction equipment parked on the road and no one could get up and down the road. It wasn't my equipment, but yeah, I didn't enter, told it needed to be moved. September 23, a warning letter for tree branches hanging over a sidewalk. This was called in by a citizen that they couldn't walk through the sidewalk appropriately without having to duck under tree branches, so tree branches need to be trimmed. Tree branches were trimmed. December 20, December 2024, another warning letter called in by a citizen of snow not being shoveled off of a sidewalk in a timely manner. I work from four in the morning until seven o'clock at night and I do plow roads and stuff like that for my business and the businesses that I work for. So it wasn't feasible to do it, storms come in the next day and it still wasn't feasible to get it all done, my driveway didn't even get done. Which brings us to part of the reason why I'm here tonight is December 2024, a warning letter for a nuisance order of my snowmobile trailer being parked on the side of my house. Now granted, yes, it is maybe eight feet in front of the, in front of the houseway, but the rest of it sits back to the, to the back. This nuisance letter basically stated that I, that I can't have anything parked on the, in the front, front of the yard there. I've parked this snowmobile trailer there for the last 18 years. Maybe it not be that exact snowmobile trailer, but that snow, I have had a snowmobile trailer for the last 18 years that I've parked there and I've never had a problem with. And I did take some pictures so that I could show some of the council members, if the council members would like to see that, is that okay to pass that out real quick, or?
You can enter anything you would like into the public record, if you present those at this meeting, it will be entered into the public record.
You betcha. I didn't know how many there was gonna be.
And we can share, we're at three minutes, so I'm gonna try to help you be.
One of the things that I did want to bring is after receiving this this last Saturday, I drove around Elkhorn Estates, just right here behind us, and I drove to this neighborhood over here, kind of over by Councilman Norman lives. And in that 20 minutes of driving, I found 62 of the same violations that I have taken pictures of. I've talked to some of those residents and some of those residents have said, yeah, no, I haven't heard anything about this, no one said anything, no one said to me. So what I'm asking the council is to look at amending this nuisance order and possibly putting it to parking on grass or coming up with a resolution that we put in a temporary permit or something for guys like me that have snowmobile trailers that only park them there maybe four months out of the year so that I'm not driving across a backyard in three feet of snow trying to get to a snowmobile trailer. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. As, as you know, because we discussed this, there's limited amount of action that the council can take tonight, we cannot discuss policy because we have not agented that, and we, Utah Open Public Meetings Act says we have to do the public's business in public with an appropriate agenda and so on. So what I'm gonna do is the same thing we've done in other cases like this, in fact, it was a, a, a parking issue, the last time I asked the council about this, and that is first of all, do you understand Mr. Hobbs' request? I'll just, yes, okay. And outside of this meeting, and just in a one-on-one sort of situation that would not violate the Public Meetings Act, let me know if you would like to revisit the ordinance that Mr. Hobbs is referencing, do you, does your warning letter cite the specific?
It does.
Because that would help us zero in on.
Yeah, so what it, what it does cites the declaration nuisance B slash six, and it says parked vehicles in front of your vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles in the front yard area outside of the driveway.
Are there numbers or letters before the B?
There is, I believe it's 702-200 is what I believe that code is.
702020.
Seven?
Oh. 02020.
020, so council.
B six.
That ordinance says, you know, we, we start working on the agenda Monday for the, for the next meeting, he let me know by Wednesday or Friday of next week. You know, and then, and then it's of course helpful to help us, help the staff, help Levi and Justin understand what sort of changes you might anticipate, maybe even spend some time tracking.
The other thing that I would just like to bring up just real quick is the definitions of a driveway and the parking strip, if you look on that second page, it's got Google's definitions and then the definition cited on Nibley Cities and it said, you know, a hard material, asphalt, gravel, or whatnot. You know what, we want to get nitpicky, you know what, I consider grass and even the earth a hard material, so.
So just by way of information, not a policy discussion, the way the ordinance works is So just by way of information, not a policy discussion, the way ordinance works is. You set definitions and then you use those definitions.
Which I understand.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
Uh, would you like to see, would any of the members like to see all the pictures of different violations?
If you have a digital, you can send me that.
Okay, I'll take. I have them on a cell phone, but I could, I can send them to you.
If I clarify, this is your, the.
This is my trailer. Yes, we. Yep. Thank you. Look forward to hearing back when.
Chelsea Jackson, please. Great to see you. Thanks for bringing your support group.
Hello, my name is Charles Jackson. I'm the attorney general of South Park, U S here in Nibley in Elkhorn Ranch. The originally developed this point of journey to the southeast of my country. We have lived in a lot of, uh, three, they should be five acres, twenty-five eight acres. My husband and I have six, six of the multiple children. And I've been saving busy as the circus master who directs some traffic and everything. When my husband and I bought our property years ago, we were aware that our property on the east was considered to be more of one end. The previous owners told us that they only had minimal plans and extra water was being diverted through this little ditch that runs through the back eight feet of our, pretty young, new thing. Our experience was similar to the previous owners with spring thaw. You see a little bit of spongy grass for a few weeks, um, a few, uh, months at the very most. And, and that's really how it's going. In two thousand nineteen, there was an excessive amount of water diverted through the ditch midsummer and we had water. Um, but it cleared up within the month that it was spring. Uh, also in two thousand nineteen, my husband and I consistently started attending city council meetings and learning about the Ridgeline Park development. We have a few concerns, primarily that water table and in the area. We expressed those concerns by experiencing city council meetings and three times in small groups with city council members and it is. Each of those situations, our concerns were explained away or told to be a problem. So we went out, we built a shed. And a massive swing pit, little circus on the eastern side of our property. In the spring of twenty twenty-one, we started so. Getting. Areas of lawn that never quite dried up, no matter the time of year. What had previously been spongy, only a few weeks of the year, was completely marshy. This has been incredibly inconvenient for my family. Their children are like no longer like using the hardest east swing.
Would you?
And they no longer using, like using the hardest east swing because they didn't get money. And they, we get no longer used on regular work. Um, because these areas have big sink and stuff. But we continue to hopefully get better. This July, those areas have become permanently mar- that were permanently marquee. They filled with standing water. Shed is sinking. You can hear water running underneath it. Your small shed bottom is right. And the water box is on. And it fills with water. But you have to reach through standing by, you have to touch the lids. They will have been underwater mostly for year this spring. And will have been frozen and thawed so many times that anticipating the interplace also their component next spring. My children cannot get to the giant swing set for them, replace it without getting wet up to make cap. This spring, uh, the city engineer Tom so courteously came to investigate. Visionary has been pumping water into the ditch this July. I don't know what they were doing previous to that. Um, visionary said they would stop looking into the ditch and start looking east. But they live downhill, downhill. The odds of water making its way to eventually are fairly high. We have seen no improvement. Uh, they say they made changes, but we're continuing to see water accumulate. I feel like we did what we were supposed to. We came to meetings, we expressed our concerns. And yet here I am with problems I was told I didn't have. We can't go back and change time. What has happened to my family happened and my family needs to move forward. My frustration is that I am a small home. It gives a large corporation the effect. And look. The city to help me remedy this situation, I could put in. But if not, I am a strong, capable person and will be working on a fair and pleasant situation. And I will leave with the city council and the mayor. Not if they draft an ordinance that protects its citizens and their property. Or allow developers to build. Or if the very least, ordinances will leave current citizens an easier path to seek compensation for negligence. And damages to the spirits. Thank you for listening to me this evening. So I am a strong and capable person. Would not be opposed to directions, suggestions and access to excessive amounts of sandbags.
Thank you, Ms. Jer- Ms. Jackson. We're at about six minutes on this. Tom, do you? And you've, you've, you've talked to Ms. Jackson. Do you have anything to report to the council on this floor?
Yeah, Ms. Jackson, we shout out to. Levi, we sat down and she expressed her concern. So. Public Works Inspector Tyler and I went out and we actually took some dye tablets. We were trying to figure out where this water was coming from and just get a definitive answer. To support or just to figure out what exactly was going on. So we went to the actual source of where they're pumping. On very east of her. It's actually, it would be along the north boundary of what was the. City Center Park. That says right along there and there, along there is a creek. There's, uh, like the canal right through there as well. But they were adding all this pump water while they were installing utilities for Ridgeline. Case seven, eight and nine. So we, we applied this dye and it's a long ways. So we followed this dye and it entered into a creek. And when we were chasing this dyeing, I actually fell into the creek a little bit above my waist. She laughed. When I went to talk to her, but now. Anyway, moving on, sorry for saying, wait. We, we found where it entered into the creek that runs right up against her, it abuts her east boundary. And so from there it kind of dissipated. So we applied more dye into that creek. And we just finally chased it all the way down. What we realized was that it enters into the creek. And then it, the water breaches over the creek bank. And from there, it just kind of works its way through and ends up in part of her backyard. She's not the only one affected. There's a little bit going into the south or south neighbor. And a lot going north because that's where the creek takes a turn to the north. And I don't know the exact reason. We really can't figure that out. Whether it's a maintenance issue on a creek. Or if it, or if it's too much water coming in, but there's a whole compilation of things that's happened over the last couple of years. We had extremely wet weather. We had record snow two years ago. But that does saturates the ground both on the surface and it sinks down in there. So what would normally be absorbed into the ground in a normal instance. Now is running off sooner. So you'll, you'll see for a couple of years, if you follow the. If you follow river paths and river flows, you'll notice that after a record storm event, it doesn't just go straight down to normal flows. It takes a couple of years and that's the reason because it's working with saturated soil. So you get run up sooner than you would in a normal condition. So there, there's that issue. Um, I, I mentioned the creek. Maybe it's a maintenance issue. There's a lot of, it's really flat. Through there where it turns to the north. So as the water flows from the east, it'll hit that corner and just kind of. A bunch of overgrown tattails and vegetation such, uh, from there, right? It didn't get too much further than her neighbor's house, but. That, that's about all I know at this point. So could be, it's a compilation of things. And I think it can be resolved with some fill along her boundary and both of her neighbors' boundaries. And I know combine that with some maintenance and maybe some vegetation removal. To get that water flowing further north, but all that's gonna do is pass the bug. You know, some, someone else can experience this issue.
So in a nutshell, do you think we have a diagnosis?
Not definitive, but.
Okay, so there's some hypotheses. Figure out there and then we figured out mitigation. Is that correct?
I think there needs to be a little bit more research done to really get a definitive answer. And I'll, I'll mention that the Jacksons have been really gracious. They're, they're very, very sweet. I apologize. That anyone's experiencing that. I just don't know what, I can't blame it entirely on the development pumping water for the utilities. I, I think it's just a combination of.
All right. Any, any questions for Tom, council?
Yeah, so the creek just run along the boundary between city property and Jackson property, both correct?
So the creek runs along, I think it's local letto to the north. So it comes from the east of our park. And then it runs along the north boundary of the, this new city center park, the Ridgeline Park park. And then it hits her east boundary and then moves to the north.
Hey, Tom, I could give you a little insight on that, but I don't know if you've got time. We, we have a full agenda, council. I, you know, this is an information gathering stage and Tom, I, I appreciate the time you've spent on it. I don't think we're done yet. So I'm gonna ask that, that we. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming and speaking to us. Uh, next we have Jason Henson, please.
I won't.
Oh, I'm gonna hold you to three minutes. I'm gonna hold you to three minutes. I, I already let that horse out of the barn.
I didn't plan to, so.
Well, thank you for doing that.
But my name is Jason Hassan. I've been there for, it could be ten years in May. Um, I'm here, I feel like something needs to change with the code enforcement, this seven dash or two dash review. Um, I got, I got a ticket for parking on the grass. Um. But I'm a first responder and the night that I got a ticket, I pulled my car. I needed my truck and pulled my car in the brakes and jumped in the truck to search for a speed bump. I just think something basically changed, maybe to forty-eight hours or something beyond, or, or whatever. Um. I occasionally leave my cars on the grass and I leave, but it's not there. Um. Also my wife, she's in the military and she's not always home. Like I was stationed this last Sunday and my wife, they were on the grass and my wife went and pulled it off the grass as soon as they left. Um, and then also I have a problem with, when I did get the, I got a ticket, I mean, they. I couldn't get ahold of anybody except to contact Evan Beagle and every time I tried calling, I called multiple times. You push that, it's not clear, code enforcement, you could do it for anybody. I left messages, nobody called me back. Finally, I think it was this last Monday. I kept calling, I kept calling, I find out there's zero on top of the, she told me it was a ticket and he was paying me five dollars. I got kind of angry at her. But, um. I, and then she told me that Evan's only a part-time job. He's not there.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Um, by way of information, does Evan have office hours, regular hours?
Not specific. It's, it's flexible hours, yeah. But he, you know, he tries to stay up on all his.
All right. Well, obviously we've been. Unfortunately, code. So now the council, as you know, your job is to decide if we have good code, right? Evan doesn't write code, you all write code. Same parking orders, I think, as we had with Mr. Hobbs. Is that correct, Mr. Hanson? Take a look at that. You, you can just nod.
Yes.
Take a look at that code. Okay.
I see I have two days. One for my car and I have a laundry after. And I was, Evan told me that and he said, there's no way I can have a monster battery parked in my room. And he said, I can't have, so. Snowplows, covers, vehicles, four-wheelers. And I said, well, that's, that's what I wanted to do. He gave a picture of my cover and a picture of my laundry back there. And he, people being in that was laundry. He told me, he told me you are good man and laundry crew is okay. Took a picture of, you know, yes.
Okay, so there is an appeal process if it's a question of interpreting a code. We've talked about that right now because we need to get on the agenda. There is. If you feel that it's a misinterpretation from the code enforcement point of view, there's an appeal process. Thanks. Okay. Anyone else like to address the council tonight? Appreciate you all coming out. Okay, with that, we will move on to, uh, the next on our agenda is a. Wetlands, Jisso Process Presentation, which I'm very excited to hear, interestingly enough. It goes along with, uh, something we've already heard about. So this is Coleman Klein. From Civil Solutions Group. Much appreciate you coming out. This is the council requested. How does all this work? So tell us how the gears match. No, absolutely not.
We, um, it's Coleman. And Civil Solutions Group. Thank you, Justin Mon, Tom Dickinson. Come talk to you. Uh, this is, this can be a very frustrating process and. Hopefully we can de-mystify it a little bit today. So, yeah. Introduction to Wetlands and Wetland Permitting. Tom, help me sprinkle a little bit of EVA in there as well. The National Environment Policy Act. So we'll get started.
So you're not clicking. You might, you might be a little far from.
Oh, this is your computer.
You can, you can tell me, Wanda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Levi. So yeah, just a little bit of myself. Again, my name's Coleman Klein. I'm the environmental manager at Civil Solutions Group. I have a bachelor of mixed studies from Franklin Marshall College in Pennsylvania. Been here at Utah for about, what, we're going six years in August. Uh, I have seven years in the environmental space doing mostly consulting, wetlands and stream restoration work. And in my spare time, I'm not in the office, um. Rapping, doing some mountain biking. I just started, uh, ski patrolling at Beaver Mountain. So hopefully we don't see you in the clinic. We just see you out on the mountain with a smile on your face. So Levi. Okay, so let's get into it. Uh, the main goals for tonight. Uh, what is a wetland and why do they matter? Common questions and misconceptions about identifying wetlands. And then we. It's, the state aspect to this. We'll follow up with the Q and A and I did not touch on this in the goals, but we'll talk a little bit. Disclaimer, I'm not a EVA expert, but I do take part in parts of it. Can you hear Levi? Okay, so, uh, I'm not gonna ask anyone to give me an answer, but is this a wetland or an upland? The answer is it's a wetland. That, this is kind of what people think of commonly, right? Levi will go to the slide. Is this a wetland or an upland? This is an alpha field. This is not a wetland. Here's the third one. Is this a wetland or an upland? This is a property down in Spanish Fork right outside of the airport. You hear one more. The answer is partially. Above that line is wetland and below it is not. So this is just meant to demonstrate that there's. You're not always gonna run into a, um, open water bog or a marsh when you have wetlands on your property. We'll go to the next one for me? Great. All right. So what is a wetland? This is from the, uh, register. Those areas that are inundated, saturated, saturated with surface or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support. And that under rude circumstances do support a abundance of vegetation typically adapted for wind and saturated soils. Wetlands generally include swamps, mudshus, bogs and similar areas. What do you actually make of that, right? There's, that, that doesn't really tell you too much, so we might have to move to the next slide. This is how we determine wetlands, this, this is how the Army Corps of Engineers, the folks that regulate wetlands. Tell us to differentiate between wetlands, streams and upland areas that are not regulated. So, there's three components of wetlands. There's wetland vegetation, every different type of plant has a different indicator status. Meaning, you know, if we go back to the alfalfa example, that's gonna be considered an upland plant, it's not tolerant of water. The opposite end of that spectrum is something like a cattail or a bulrush. These are what we call obligate plant species, which means they almost always grow in wetlands. So that's the first step. The second is soils, you see I have in parentheses hydro soils. That is essentially a wetland soil. So what differentiates them from upland soils? If you look at this. Picture right here, you can see this rust-colored soil. That's called redox or redoxymorphic features, you can just think of that as the rust in the soil. Or sorry, not the rust, the iron in the soil rusting from the water table coming up and down. That's a good cue that you're having high groundwater. The third is hydrology. So where is the groundwater at relative to the surface? To the existing ground or the existing ground elevation? To have hydrology, if you look at this photo here, this is a sample point, this is what we do during our fieldwork. We're digging down into the soil about eighteen to twenty-four inches, sometimes more. And we're trying to determine where the groundwater is. This is important because. You can't have water, well, you can't have a wetland without water, right? Another important thing here is the time of year, the Army Corps says. That you need to do delineations during the growing season, think about when trees are blooming, plants are getting green and growing again. Now is not a good time to do a wetland delineation. So, that, that's kind of the three components of what a wetland is, and then why does it matter, so. I'll touch briefly, there is ecological benefit to wetlands, there's a lot of species that can't live without wetlands. Think of your amphibians, a lot of the reptiles, there's endangered flowers, as we maybe know too well. So they also provide flood, flood attenuation, they act as big sponges, right? They can be very important. In river corridors to help absorb some of that water. Now, this is the part that I deal with mostly, this is, they're, they're regulated under section four of four of the Clean Water Act. So, there's a bunch of different sections of the Clean Water Act, section four of four regulates spill impacts to wetlands. Or even if we go a little further, waters of the US. Which. For the sake of this brief overview is. Almost synonymous terms, we can talk about that a little bit here. So we deal with the Army Corps of Engineers to get permits to fill and impact wetlands, these are things like roadways, developments, stream alteration. Uh, programs, shoring up a, a riverbank. Why does that matter? This can cause massive delays for projects regardless of the size. There's extra cost involved, you gotta hire guys like me, you gotta deal with the court. And there's also potential legal ramifications. Uh, if, if you think going through a permitting process with wetlands is tedious, try dealing with the wetland violation, the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, that can take years and. So much more money than just doing a permit and going through that process, so when it comes to wetlands, uh. Begging for forgiveness is probably not the best way to go. You go. Okay, I'll try not to bore you with all this on the screen here. But. These are some common questions I get asked as a consultant on, on property, so I'm trying to go through these fairly quickly. So how do I determine presence or absence of wetlands on the property? By wetlands, I'm talking about the second bullet point here, we use wetlands synonymously with a lot of these features. So you've got your wetlands, your streams, think of the Logan River, Blacksmith Fork. We've got ditches. Irrigation ditches, they, those can be laterals, they can be distribution ditches, any kind of ditch. Ponds, self-explanatory, and uplands, areas that are not these areas. So the way we determine that is doing what we call an aquatic resource delineation or a wetland delineation in more common terms. These wetland delineations, I, I always describe myself as a glorified surveyor, I just identify wetlands and help people know what's out on site. The Army Corps of Engineers, they're the ultimate. Deciding party in what constitutes wetlands or uplands or other aquatic features. So. A client, for example, Nibley City, would hire myself or another consultant to survey these wetland areas. We send our findings to the Army Corps and they either verify, deny, or request modifications to our. So that's kind of the basis, that, you'll get a letter back from the Army Corps stating. You know, either agreeing with your delineation, requesting modifications. And then that letter from the Army Corps, called a jurisdictional determination. Sorry, I know there's a lot of terms being thrown around here, but. That jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps, that is your legal document stating what you have on your property. So just keep that in mind. With delineation too, we also determine this third point. Are the wetlands through chance ditches, are they jurisdictional, meaning they waters of the US or not? Are they regulated by the federal government under the Clean Water Act? Usually they are, uh, the short. We'll try to make a long story short, there are some wetlands. That are not waters of the US, meaning they're not regulated by the federal government. Those are generally isolated, surrounded by uplands, we see a lot of old stock ponds for water and cattle. That can be a good example, if they don't have a surface water connection to the Blacksmith Fork or another tributary. You may not have waters of the US. Okay, the next, uh, common question I get asked. All three components are not needed to make a wetland, all three components being your wetland vegetation, your soils and your hydrology. Sometimes we just don't have hydro soils, it, sometimes they just don't show up. The second point I want to touch on here, this is maybe the most common question I get asked, is. It pertains to the dry season water table. So. The Corps says, the Army Corps, in their delineation manuals and their protocols that they give to us. Says that groundwater or saturated soils, they only need to be within one foot of the surface. So if you think about a foot down from the surface, that groundwater really needs to be there for two consecutive weeks, that's such a short time. So a lot of times we get calls, hey, this area is wet in spring, but it's not in fall, do I have a wetland or not? The answer could be, you might have wetlands. So that's, that's an important thing to consider. The third common question I get asked is, well, what if my property is irrigated or has a well on it? Irrigation-induced wetlands, meaning wetlands caused by irrigation, are completely possible. They're treated the same as natural wetlands by the Army Corps. And unfortunately, the only way to prove to the Army Corps that they are irrigation-induced wetlands is removing that irrigation from the property. That can be two to three growing seasons or years. So. That can be difficult for land use if you're grazing cattle, um. Sorry, that's kind of the, the deal with the court. Do you go to the next slide, Levi? Okay, this is another one I get asked, wow, so there, there are online sources that show wetlands on your property. You know, why can't I just use that instead of a delineation? So if you've ever been on Cash Can't Be a Parcel Viewer, there is a layer that says, it's sensitive lands layer. And it uses what we call the National Wetland Inventory. This is from the National Wetland Inventory here. This is created by Fish and Wildlife Service back in the eighties. To make an estimate of what wetlands are present on a property. They use aerial imagery from a number of different years, and it's kind of a guess, they're not. Field truth, you do, no one's looking out in the field to verify them. So what I've just showed here is, on the left, you have the National Wetland Inventory. And then you, on the right here, you have a wetland delineation that I did down in the Spanish Fork area. If you look, if you compare and contrast, you got this linear feature. That's this linear feature here, okay, great, NWI got that section, but look in the middle here. A lot of this is not wetland. As where the NWI shows a ton of wetland. This can go the other way too, you can have a field that shows nothing on the NWI, but the whole thing could be wetland. So my biggest thing is use this with extreme caution. Do not trust it, it is not the gospel, um, please, we've seen so many people get in trouble by. Using the NWI incorrectly and it just causes a lot of issues. Levi?
Sorry, I gotta ask, just.
Yeah, absolutely.
The blue line, the, it's from the bottom right. Is it a road or a river and the NWI?
Uh, this one here?
That, no doubt, there.
Yeah, so these blue features are either, uh, more lake-type environments or, uh, stream channels.
So that's a stream channel, correct, okay, thank you.
And then there's a bunch of different classifications, but that's. That's about the more you need to know.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, I touched on some. Q and A type deals, some, some, uh, commonly asked questions. How do you actually do a high screening for wetlands on the property? Um, I've got a couple suggestions here, the National Wetland Inventory, and there's also the UTM Geological Survey, they have them too. Use this with extreme caution, maybe use that to get a general idea, but then dig a little deeper. Google Earth, the aerial imagery on Google Earth can be incredibly helpful, there's a historic image feature, um. If you pull Google Earth, there's a toolbar up top, it'll have a, it, it looks like a clock with a ring on it. You can scroll through and look at all of these different aerial images, it's great, it's free, you can look for areas that look wet. The Army Corps does this when we, uh, go through the process. The third one here is. I have a map viewer that can show you, uh, sources of wetland hydrology, so. Every water right has a different, um, sign to it. The main thing to use this for, it will show you if there's any water rights on a property associated with the spring or an artesian well. So that can be a good cue. Of whether you wanna look for wetlands on the property or not. If you have a spring, there's probably a wetland associated with it. Uh, the second last bullet, you can submit a Freedom of Information Request on your property. Uh, some people have had wetland delineations in their property and they just don't know. You can send the Army Corps a FOIA request and you might get something back. That's maybe more relevant if you recently purchased a property, but can be something good to use. And then, when in doubt, just consult an expert, the Army Corps used to do delineations themselves. Um, low Army Corps budget, they don't do it anymore. So who can you rely on? You can talk to folks like Tom, city engineers, you can call consultants like myself. I'm not trying, I'm not here to advertise my services, but if you ever do have questions. Please feel free to call or email, I talk to people all the time that I don't do actual contracted work for, and just help talk, talk through the process. Levi? Okay. The next step is permitting, we identified what constitutes a wetland and some tools you can use. I'm gonna try and breeze through this and then we can do some Q and A, if anyone has specific questions or feels like I haven't covered something. So with permitting, there's a couple of different parties here involved, there's the Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Water Rights, they're through Utah D and R. We have the, uh, Utah DEQ and then the United States Environmental Protection Agency or the EDP. So Levi, to your next slide. Okay. To not be this guy, and you still might be this guy, I've got a couple suggestions. Um, permitting is all about expectation management, it's gonna take longer than you expect. We get a lot of calls about projects that they need the permit yesterday for. And as, we can work as hard as we want. But we're not gonna get that permitted faster. So my. Biggest suggestion would be start the process early, if you have questions about wetlands on the property. It's best to ask them to do and ask for forgiveness later. If you do have wetlands on your property, do a wetland delineation during the growing season if possible, late spring into the fall, that, that's kind of your sweet spot. If you don't do a delineation, just take some photos of your property during the spring, we've had a lot of private landowners. That are trying to do a project and the Army Corps catches wind that there might have been spill impacts that weren't permitted. If you don't have photos or red documentation, it just turns into a big he said, she said battle. Probably guess who will normally. Again, I told this, expect the layers to be flexible if possible. The Army Corps always has comments and permit applications, which I'll talk about in detail for that. Also, there's city and county requirements too, uh, Logan City, Cash County, I think Nibley's implementing this as well. If there's wetlands or suspicion of wetlands on a property. They're gonna wanna see some documentation of that, whether that's having a permit in hand. Or having documentation from the Army Corps that you're not going to be affecting. This is from the Army Corps, they say nationwide, less than one percent of all requests for permits are denied, that is true. But it can be potentially misleading. Denied permits generally come from the inability or unwillingness to change, project doesn't want to impact wetlands. Now, I think more into the inability part. Because projects have the pencil, we wanna have the correct amenities for projects, um. As much of a machine as the Army Corps can feel like. They can be reasonable. Levi, would you go to the next one? Cool. How long do you have time? Yeah, I'll try to speed it up a little bit. All right, so we've got the Army Corps permitting and Utah Department of Water Rights permitting. The one thing I'm conscious here is, there's stream channels, you need a permit to impact stream channels. The Army Corps and state of Utah, they double dip when regulating. So sometimes you get permit with both. The Army Corps regulates wetland streams, ponds and ditches. As where the state just impacts stream channels. Or regulate stream channels and buffer along the channel. There's a couple of different types of permits with the Army Corps. You have a nationwide permit, a letter of permission and an individual permit. These are mostly broken down by proposed impact to wetlands and other resources. We like to stay on this nationwide permit spot, because the less wetlands you have, the better. The key, if there's one key gateway from this slide for permitting. Is this right here, compensatory mitigation, it's kind of an ugly word. Um, it means rebuilding, restoring wetlands to offset your proposed impacts for a project. If you impact more than ten of an acre of wetlands, or more than point oh three acres of stream impacts. You generally require compensatory mitigation. So this is where we like to try and stay under for projects, if you can impact less than ten of an acre or less than point oh three acres of stream channel. You're looking pretty good. Levi?
Okay. Again, this impacts the wetlands and the resources, you're gonna have a better outcome.
Nationwide permits, they have a forty-five day review period with the Army Corps. But they can't get drawn out, there can be comments, and if you get into that, that M word, mitigation. You can be looking at it six months or more for approval, I've got a few projects that are waiting a year and a half. Because we're trying to get mitigation ironed out at the Army Corps. So again, consider wetland mitigation, there's your magic numbers. This can be difficult to do, um, compensatory mitigation, because it requires extra land, there's more construction costs. There's monitoring to prove it to the Army Corps that you're doing what you told them you would be doing. There can be non-wasting endowments, so there's additional costs with that. Levi? Levi? Okay, we're almost done. Thank you for bearing with me. There's some additional requirements that need to be considered. Threatened endangered species and cultural resources. So these, a lot of times, I call them box checking activities because there's not an impact to these two resources. But they can come up. The Nibley City Park is an example of this. There's other projects too. Cultural resources. These are things like historic sites, canals, pre-settlement areas. We don't see these too often, so if you don't have to deal with these, great. This is one thing we often deal with is threatened and endangered species. The main one is U L T, it's this orchid here that grows in kind of a. I don't know what you wanna call it, kind of a helix shape. It's a threatened species under the endangered species act. If there's potential habitat on the property that you're trying to build on, do a project on. This thing can make you wait for a very long time. There's another sort of mitigation process with that. Similar to exceeding your wetland mitigation thresholds. So um, the one other thing I'll say on that. Is the U L T dress was recommended to be delisted by Fish and Wildlife Service. But it hasn't officially been delisted yet. The timeframe for delistings to be determined, we'll see how that goes with the upcoming administration. But don't hold your breath if you have U L T stress or potential habitat. Levi? Cool. So Tom asked me to put this piece in here. And again, I'm not a NEPA expert, that's the National Environmental Policy Act. But we do things that pertain to NEPA. Kind of the big picture points, um, it was signed in the nineteen seventies, similar to the Clean Water Act. There's roughly twenty-six federal laws and regulations that you do comply with for NEPA. It generally is required when there's federal funding or a federal project. The lead agency is the agency carrying federal action, in the case of Nibley City Park, that's gonna be Army Corps of Engineers. You go to the next slide. Here you can see all the different acts. We've got a couple of things pertaining to cultural resources. We have some environmental justice type uh work that needs to be done. Oh, we, we've got floodplain management.
So, so really, this, this was one of the slides I considered there. That's actually the requirements we have to meet. To start, or to break ground on the, the Nibley City Center Park. This is part of the land, the LWCF grant requirements, so.
Was that requirement, Tom?
No, it's totally fine.
And that requirement was in part because of the federal funding that received on a grant.
Exactly.
So the main things, you know, some of these won't apply. There's wild and scenic rivers on the property, but you gotta check, just check that box. Or the wetlands that we're dealing with, that would be required for any, that's part of. Okay, um, sorry if I ran by a bit. Sometimes, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them the best I can. And.
Very good for having comments. So, Tom, can I give you a chance to add anything that you would like to comment presentation and like to counsel us questions if that's okay?
I'm super eager when I ask him to put together this presentation and go working. Just you got it to me on right on time. It's everything we thought it'd be and it's just been great working with him. That's just, thank you, Coleman.
Sorry, if I may. Uh, ju- just one thing there. Um, part of, this is just something, I'm, I'm super glad you guys asked this question, wanna know this and you should think about it every time we accept property from anybody. Or we purchase property from anybody. But this was a little bit unique where we thought that this process was done. And taken care of when we got this property, but what actually happened was. The, and you correct me if I'm wrong here, but the Ridgeline Park Development submitted their application. And they did not, the Army Corps of Engineers did not respond or review in time. And so therefore their permit was approved. And in my mind, that meant that the delineation was accepted. But that is not the case. What happened is their permit is approved. But delineation was never looked at. And so we essentially had to start over at the delineation phase. And with the delineation, deline- delineation we did, that's where this U L T dress stuff came up. So we kinda got, we thought we were ahead of it, but we really weren't, so. We learned.
I, I guess I do have a little bit to add to that expert, that comment. So he, he identified several resources available to identify if there's uh. Wetlands on the property and primarily the one I use is the National Wetland Inventory. It's really a ten thousand, thirty thousand foot level analysis. It, to me, it's just like. There might be wetlands here. So to me, the developer that comes in, that's their responsibility. They're gonna to destroy them. It's their responsibility to get the permit. There's no ordinances that require the city to make sure that they get those permits. That's a private decision. However, where I do draw the line is if there's a city road, city park. City trail, and they're gonna be disturbing something that's going to be dedicated to the city through plat or agreement or anything else. And I see this on the National Wetland Inventory, I say, hey, timeout, you need to delineate that. You need to make sure that we're not inheriting problems that you're going to cause with your development. So there's one project in particular, it delayed them about eighteen months. And it was like my first month here. It says, hey, Tom, this has been through all the reviews, sign the plat. Hang on, and we, we ended up starting over and they had to modify the plan, they eliminated a few blocks and things. So anyway, that, that's, this is super important and I've, I've seen the effects of not following these rules. Logan City was tied up in a lawsuit and this mitigation process for about fourteen years. He said, the city accepted the road, destroyed some wetlands that were not identified. City then became one of the parties that was sued by. Fix it, took years and years and years to do.
Counsel, do you have questions?
So one of the restrictions or, or penalties, it could be the deed. They can tag your, or your, your property. Have you seen that before in the ballot here?
Yeah, and maybe what you're referencing is the mitigation requirements. So when an applicant needs to do the compensatory mitigation. Uh, part of the mitigation requirement is to deed restrict your wetland mitigation area. So there's a template that the Army Corps has that essentially. But it, it restricts the usage of that wetland mitigation area perpetuity only for wetland mitigation. That, that's what I was referencing in there. I've never seen any. I don't even know what you wanna call it. Issues with the deed for violations. Uh, for, for violations, what we normally see is, is a number of things. There could be. Uh, an increase of, of wetland mitigation, you know. Logan City puts in a road that wasn't permitted or a developer puts in a road that Logan City inherits. There would be a need for additional wetland to be created. Sometimes, um, the applicant or the, you know, landowner needs to tear out. Or remove all fill from the unimpacted wetland areas or the, the unpermitted wetland areas. Or, um, you know, I, I've never seen this personally thankfully, but I have seen, um. Or heard of stories where developers and other applicants have gone to federal prison. For violating Clean Water Acts, so, um. It's all case specific, but these are some things that happen. But yeah, the deed restriction is part of the, the mitigation planning itself.
Yeah, so appreciate it. I appreciate your passion for this also. Uh, we need people like that. If you were sitting over here as a, a city council representative, you heard some of the comments that remain public comment. We've done some things to try to, um. Help uh both the city and its residents and developers. Ordinances or checkboxes and processes you recommend if you were sitting here. Uh, to protect the city and, and the wetlands and, and people.
Sure, that's, that's a good question. This might get me in a little bit of trouble with my clients, right? But I, I really do, a- as frustrating as it can be to go through this process and get permits. It's even worse dealing with enforcement actions, right? I, I touched on that. It's really not something you wanna ask for forgiveness after the fact. What I've seen with, um, you know, Cache County and, and Logan, for example, was they do have ordinances. Uh, I, I believe, I believe this with city infrastructure, you do need to get a wetland delineation. I think it's a proper ordinance for that. This is, a- as much as, um, applicants hate to deal with wetlands. It really can save them future, not have to deal with potential violation. So I think that's one. Nibley is a tough one because the, the ground is so high here, you know. Estimated high water table studies, we do some of those, uh, down this way and. You go two and a half feet down, three feet, and you're hitting groundwater or at least evidence of groundwater. That's a tough one, so, um, a- as far as like downstream impacts for the, you know, the example of Ms. Jackson. I, I think what you alluded to, Tom, is like there might be need for maintenance or. Shoring up stream channel banks. Again, we don't know exactly what's causing them, but, um. I, I guess, long story long, be requiring some kind of coordination to work with. Just to protect yourself and, you know. This is the same visionary builds a development and there was a violation and then. A homer could potentially inherit that issue. I guess those would be my suggestions, yeah.
Nathan, do you mind if I follow up on that? I mean, this is very informative, Coleman. Thank you so much. And I think one of the things I'm learning from this, I actually thought Nibley City had a larger responsibility. On enforcement. Even if there was not Nibley City infrastructure or land that was dedicated to Nibley City. I mean, I guess the question then is, the Army Corps is the enforcer. And how does the Army Corps, I mean, even get notified of a potential violation?
Yeah, great question. There's, I would say there's two main pathways to that. There is a sort of a tip line where citizens can call in, uh, it's email, it's all online. But, uh, they can email in if a potential violation, we've seen that happen sometimes. I would say it mostly happens when the Army Corps is reviewing permit or a delineation. And they see something nearby in their review of aerial images. They do have a database of what has been permitted and what has not, so I would say that's where we see most of our issues.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Council, I may have misspelled here, I, I made a generality there. We do have sensitive lands ordinance. And it, it does require identifying these sensitive lands. But I believe it's really weak in the enforcement application. I, I think it's really specific in the conservation subdivision, but it's really weak in area, so. It, it, it might be worth it.
It's gonna fall out soon, potential goal.
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult subject, but I think a lot of it is just the education piece too. We have a lot of great clients that come talk to us when there are concerns of wetlands. And, uh, that goes a long way, but, um, again, I think it is really important to. Go through the proper means instead of paying for forgiveness after the fact. It gets so messy.
Says that just because the Army Corps is the enforcer on private property, that doesn't mean that Nibley City. We as a council couldn't take a more active role. We, we had Nathan and Tom and others let us through a great discussion that ended up in a. A great discussion on individual property rights versus the rights of the community related to groundwater and where you're allowed basements and so on and so forth. Because you're right, we've got, we've got a lot of water in Nibley. So, uh, I, I thank you. I mean, that gives me a chance to. Not sure I was on board with that at first, you probably know that, um, but you got me, you, you got me there, so thanks for taking us through that. Counsel, I have two other things.
Sorry to drag these out. One, yeah, just wanna explain a tool that I use and Levi and I. I can share rules for subdivisions. We, we've implemented a record of decision. There's, there's, it's implied in our code that we can have a permit for development, so. Through the record decision, we establish conditions of approval. And when I identify these wetlands or possibility of wetlands and their city infrastructure that just impact these, I make it a condition of approval. That that's delineated, avoided and mitigated if, if necessary, so before they can record a plat. They have this, um.
How the entirety of the plat?
Before they can, no, no, just on the public infrastructure.
Okay, the, the.
But if, but if it's just the public infrastructure, they're gonna, that permit is gonna look at the entire development.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's one tool we use to try to protect those wetlands. The other one is a, a specific question for you, Coleman, related to Ms. Jackson's issue.
And by the way, it's Ms. Jackson. I mean, we're not, we're not assigning merit of, you're a single mom tonight. And so it's Ms. Jackson. I don't, I didn't start something, a rumor in public records that doesn't. It's Ms. Jackson.
A spring and that flowing water that heads from the east. Hits her east boundary and then shoots to the, to mitigate that or do maintenance on that creek. Permits would be required. We need to go to get a joint permit from the state engineer's office and. Get and go in and drag the banks or fridge, remove vegetation, things like that. Or we just go and say this is a, a problem that's creating damage to property. Can we do it against a, you see, mitigation? Yeah, you help me decide, it'll be.
Futures of. Exactly, no, I was actually thinking about that discussion was happening. Permits do we need for that? So I think at a minimum, you'd be looking at a stream alteration permit, probably a J P A, um. Sent to the stream alteration office as well as, you know, the Army Corps would review that also. If you're impacting wetlands, you would need some sort of permit with the Army Corps. It is exclusively a stream bank issue or within, so the state regulates the ordinary high watermark. As does the Army Corps, but then the state goes a step further and they regulate twice the bank width on each side. Up to thirty feet, so let's say that channel is ten feet, the state would regulate twenty feet on both sides. So if the solution would be to groom up that one side, you'd probably be looking at. Uh, that would be a P G P ten, programmatic general permit ten. It's in a. Joint permit in agreement with the Army Corps and the state to allow hard working bank. That would be a very easy project to justify to the state. And I will say the state's fantastic to work with, so we can't just go in and start putting fill on the boundary.
So we, we, we'd be best more likely protected if we get disturbed. And I'll bring this up also, we just did a rezone for possible mortuary off of thirty two hundred south. They have a spring and they have wetlands from that spring, so to, to disturb those, I've been trying to work with the developer. He's not quite understanding the whole processes, but there's, there's multiple processes, you have water right, you have wetlands, and you have stream alteration possibly, so. Anyway, thank you for, for that comment.
Yeah, just clarify on that emergency piece, the emergency permits. Yeah, just clarify on that emergency piece, the emergency permits, I, I. Full disclosure, I have never had to do an emergency permit, thankfully, but. I believe there is a, there is a clause in the stream alteration permit program that does allow for emergency activities. Where you permit it after the fact, um I, I think that would be more of a like a Lynn type deal. And ob- obviously what's happening when Ms. Jackson's property is an issue, but I don't think it qualifies as an emergency.
Nathan, did I interrupt? Other questions you had? Okay, other, go ahead, Garrett.
Mention I already think that the U lady dresses would actually be deemed a steal. I'll speed that up.
Yeah, there is a, she's a U lady's dress specialist, fishing wildlife.
Well, fishing wildlife sounds convinced.
It's, it's one of those things, you know, a reason why I'm voting into this decision, I, it's more of a Washington, uh DC type decision. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if it gets rolled back with this current administration.
If Council, just a brief question, a couple of years ago, the second case in front of the Supreme Court. I thought was going to turn the Army Corps upside down, based on. What I thought would be a limitation of the Army Corps' authority. What's changed since that ruling by the Supreme Court?
Hardly anything.
Okay, that's a, that's a sufficient answer, thank you, Garrett. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Coleman.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Chet, you're up next, Chad Olson Streets Division Manager, we're not going to talk about intelligent streets, but by golly, we're going to talk about informed streets. I have uh, Aaron has asked for general consent for a two-minute recess. Any other, okay, we're on it, two minutes, Chet, can you hang tight for two minutes?
Always talk about.
For being patient, we'll come back to order and hear, hear a presentation from Chet Olson about informed streets. Thanks for dressing up for us.
You're good. I'm impressed, I have this on YouTube, this is pretty cool. And I always want to introduce myself, and there's a reason for that, because. Uh, this summer, we were doing the signs, the twenty one year signs on the inner west. And Councilman Manchin just said, oh, that's the guy that's uh is the cordial champion. Now, I don't like.
So she was wrong?
Yeah, I've been with the city for three years. Actually built a house in Nibley in two thousand and fifteen, had plans to move a little about four or five years from there to Peterborough, which I'm from. We're still here, so we still enjoy every, actually loving it. Of course, we're everything. And it's really need to work and live in the same city that you live in, um. But already, so this is my first time ever presenting in front of the council, pretty good to be, and so. Bear with me, I know this is going to be short, and we do. And so, okay, I need to stay inside, good eyes. Uh, I do have a question for you, council members, you don't have to ask the tell about. Um, how many trips do you guys make per day? I asked this question myself, I thought it was way. But me and Tom have discussed this and we have it in the board for you.
For us or for?
Just a second, sorry, just a second, sorry, Chet, I think it's my.
Obviously, software or kids or people down. Uh, Department's combo center per day, the office is ten, ten different day retail. There's thirty eight trips per day and then that's the goal is five trips. And I don't want to die too much, but we obviously run a lot. This is probably counting your garbage trucks, your UPS truck or your FedEx truck either, so that hasn't been. Um, I don't want to go and just kind of show you some facts about Nibley streets. So currently, Nibley City maintains eighty-eight lane miles. Now, lane miles is a little different than settler miles, so on the lane mile, for example, in twenty six hundred west spring. The Midwest to the Main Street, that is currently one mile, and that is two lane miles. And so, and now from Midwest to Main Street on thirty two hundred, a little bit different because obviously it comes in turn of lanes. And everything, maybe the whole thing, so that, for a little, little city, that is a lot. Now, currently, there are three types of class H E roasts in our city, with our cario, which is thirty two hundred. Twenty six, and there's collectors that are about eight, ten. And the residents obviously get a little bit, how sort of these live at. And currently, um so I'm going to hit this bottom piece, currently we have three types of methods to create a roast. Is the chip cells, the slurry cells, and the silk coats. Um, lately, we've been using a lot of silk coat. It's been, it's been great for us, it's, the turnaround is amazing, you have a day away. Um, but a lot of people don't know is we've been going through a lot of um. Lessons in the training classes and trying to figure it out, so. The lifespan of asphalt, once they lay it down, you have forty years, I think that. Now, that's not feasible in the city, you know that, Mayor, I do, the budget does not exist on that, so. What we are trying to do, is trying to maintain and preserve that with simple costs and. So right now, what we're doing is in most of the demonstration as well as, right now, we're making new development, put silk on, silk go on immediately. We've done that at Miller Meadows, is what happens is they actually go. Didn't have any silk on, they just put the ghosts and they let the asphalt, then dump trucks come in, the loaders come in, cement trucks come in. Everything, it's just complete chaos of mud and dirt, and that's the worst thing you could do. So what we've done now is, for example, like I said, Miller Meadows, so they came and paved it, no one drove one per day, they came and silcoated that. Looks great, there is actually a private road next to it, it's a nine-day difference. So it's been, it's been amazing to work with that. A little back history, so I've lived in the city for two years, and beforehand, what we would do to, to select these type of treatment. Is me and Steve would probably go out and early winter. Um, wait, I'm sorry, late winter, early spring, when the snow does melt. And go through and just say, this road means good, let's go, okay, hey, we can treat it this year. Let's do it, maybe hold off on this, so we have a pretty good plan, an idea, but we want to feature. We want to, we want to expand and say, hey, we, we know what's gonna happen in ten years. Show you the numbers and that, and so that's what we have informed streets. We've been teaming with the Orange Engineering, and they have a great work with. And now Tom is getting to kind of tell us a little bit why it's called G P. And why this way is so important in informed streets.
Thank you, before you move on, just a very quick question on that slide, did there just been a slurry seal and a seal coat?
Okay, sorry, so what a sub code is, is it's called like an E A, I remember before. It's, it's a, and it's on, and the slurry cells actually has. It's above our rubber surface, my example is, um, but um.
So, while not ruining Chet's presentation, but I think, to, to establish the condition of the pavement. In the case, there's two ways to do it, primarily, two major ways to do it, uh, one's a PCI method and one's a Paser. This PCI method is, is the payment condition index, and the Paser is a payment surface evaluation rate, so. PCI takes a range of one to one hundred, and it takes a lot of intricate measurements. Levels and straightness and it, it's a really in-depth investigation, the Paser rating has a one to ten rating. But then you put a decimal point in it, so it's very similar to the PCI, but it's not as in-depth as, as a, of an investigation. Um, we worked with HOROCs, as Chet mentioned, they mounted cameras to a, a vehicle and we, they drove every lane mile. Of Nibley City, and then they took all that video data and took it back using experts in, in asphalt condition. They graded each of our roads and gave every one of them a Paser rating. Um, a good target Paser rating is about six to six and a half, and, and what that would mean is it's, has some surface flaws. It may have a little bit of deviation, but it, it's functional, it, it's not severely cracked. You might have some cracks, but not really pothole, not alligator or anything like that, so. It's much less expensive to do the Paser than the PCI, just because of how much time and effort it takes to do PCI. You got a next one, please.
But it's not, it's, it's not artificial, it, it's not a machine determination, it's people looking at the video.
Not yet, there is some AI out there that you can pay for, but in this case, it was. It was taken through video and analyzed by experts, probably some interns at HOROCs. So, so, well, I have a. Couple of photos, now, left side, you see the PCI and the Paser, you can see all of the, or most of the deficiencies on the left-hand side in both of the ratings. The PCI identify your alligator cracking, rectangular block cracking, linear transverse cracking. Edge cracking, sluggish cracking, rattling in bottles, you can see that all in both of those differences. The PCI, you would actually physically measure the difference between the, the block cracking and the transverse cracking and. Give it a different rating, what's more. Give it a different rating, what's more difficult to see. Is maybe not the exact example on the right photo, but rutting and upheaval. So on the right is a severe rutting, that to, that's a structural failure, that's beyond what the pavement is, that's everything underneath it. And upheaval is is more of a. A failure of the pavement, but it's. Due to high volume traffic coming from a high speed, stopping. With bigger vehicles or accelerating and and you'll, you've seen it, I'm sure, like on. Um, the highway turning into tenth west, they recently redid it, but it just really looks like severe ruts. That's what the upheaval is, paper, pazer rating has a more difficult time identifying those sometimes. All in all, we don't have a huge running problem or upheaval problem in Niblet, just because of of our. So, so are there any questions on what pazer and PCI? The difference are and what we actually look for when we're. Trying to rate or grade each of our roads here? So, okay, I think the next one's back to you, Chad. Oh, no, it's still me. So on the left, you'll see the different ranges, excellent, um, PCI is eighty six. Treatment based on the PCI range, as well as on the right-hand side, you'll see the pazer and. Suggested treatments on the right-hand side, so. If you look at an excellent road having a pazer rating of nine to ten, there's no maintenance, it's it's basically brand new. Um, when you get into the seven, eight range, you do crack ceiling and miter patching. When you get in the fair range, five to six, uh, you're doing surface treatments, non-structural treatments, uh. And then when you get into the poor range, three, four, you're doing structural. Renewal, um, and overlay where you grind off a certain portion of the surface and then reapply a new surface. And when you're failing in one to two range. When you reconstruct and tear it out. So. Three, four reach before you're doing an overlay really is kind of bad, but. What Horox's informed streets does, it allows us to tailor it to our individual needs. So we're able to make some modifications in the suggested treatments. We want a six point five or better roads, we we're we're more into the good. And if we treat them on a regular basis, we can do it less expensive than having to go all the way down to a failed condition. And reconstructing. So in in our case, we're targeting a six point five, but our first treatment is not going to wait until. We get into the fair range, we programmed it to be up in the seven range. To get that first, that treatment on really quick. Chad Chad mentioned that we get a very first treatment on all these subdivisions right after they lay the asphalt. That seals it in. It protects it from the sun, so we're more likely to get more life out of it. For the first treatment, so through the degradation and logistics in this program. We've actually. Kind of changed. Our target to a little bit higher. Knowing we want better roads. For example, uh, on our arterial roads, we're treating it very well until we hit about a four. On our arterial roads and then we're programmed that to. To schedule a reconstruct, we don't want it to get down to one and two on the arterial thirty two hundred, so. We want these to maintain a really high level of service. The residential, we were able to get down in two, three range before construction, so it's all programmed, so again, I just want to emphasize that. We were able to tailor it to our individual needs and and. I'll let you tell what happens after.
Good, you tell, so now we're gonna kind of, this is the graph, obviously, so this is the streets. This software will be using. Obviously you can tell that we have an average of two thirty five thousand dollars. What we're doing now is obviously inflation. And so the big, big thing that we focus on is this, the pazer rating, like it's a six, so seven and a half degree. Then you can tell, so you can see over this twenty year span. That we are. We don't want that, obviously. Everyone wants to make a very interesting. And we we can adjust by this. So in the next slide. That shows you how every year we're going to do. And this does not include future developments. And so this is not, we can't calculate, it's gonna happen in the. So what we did is we found. Is we sort of have meetings and budgets. Um, to see where we can maintain. Pazer rating for twenty years. And that would be, we found a full hundred thousand or four fifty. That is the ideal number for each year. And obviously this is kind of, what does change is obviously if you don't get that. You suddenly you save that money and do other treatments. If you can think about, I'll go back, I apologize. So in this graph, you can not see any green, now green is a reconstruct. With this hundred thousand dollar, we can start having some re- some money for reconstructing roads. Obviously you don't want to do every road because. You shut that all memory, and then the system is not like that. But then if I go check, you're just gonna have more and more money, so what we found, and I will give you this. So we went with a million dollars. Every year. And you can obviously see the pazer rating. Is just about the same. So what I'm asking for a million dollars, but you can see how we can tell is that. There's a lot of time to reconstruction. Twenty forty two, pretty much all of Niblet City is gonna be shut down. You can go that for reconstruct. So. That's what we're gonna show you, um, and ten ten purposes, is we are still working some. Bugs out. On some things. Um. And so we're gonna try to have a. Very shortly, just throw a diagram. And show you how. What was the, you know, this, beginning of this is, if you ask me, I can tell you exactly every year. That's a good thing. And exactly we force that, it's like, well, we're gonna treat that road, I don't know. What else? But now I can go to you and say, hey, we're gonna do this road, this road, this road, this road. So. Is there any questions so far?
So, just to clarify, you're saying, all right, twenty twenty seven, you. And pre-budget. For years of things.
I said before, this does not include. Any further for budgeting for. They can't, if they were magical, that'd be great too, if they did predict the thing. You have a question, Piper. Questions? So.
Okay, I'll go ahead, and I know this is. Uh, supposed to be too much about details of the budget, but great, great question about. The cost, um. Class B and C road income from the state of Utah. What, what is that per year? Do you know off the tongue, anybody? Don't mean to put anyone on the spot.
About three hundred and thirty thousand.
Three hundred and thirty thousand.
So we need to. Do four hundred on top of that, or does that count?
Okay.
That's good news.
So what I don't know what Tom is gonna do, is he actually had you create the initial little. How similar we.
So this is, you're, this has the ability to create scenarios and things like that, the default scenario is. Basically, the logarithm that we helped build based on the pazer rating, treatments. Suggested treatments, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, the default, for some reason, they set it at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we'll, we'll use that as a starting point. And you'll, you'll see that the pazer rating. Our average pazer rating within about. Six years. We're at and starting to decline below our anticipated level of service. Or our desired level of service by by adjusting this up to four hundred thousand dollars. As. As Chad mentioned. You'll see that. It we decline a little slower, it gets us out another four or five years, but it also maintains beyond that another sixteen years, so. By twenty forty five, we're still right in the same range. It it suggests some treatments in here, um, each year, like, like. Chad mentioned, one year might. Ex- be meet our budget, the next might exceed it, and the the one, though, the next might be less. But what this, this, oh no. It's not, that wasn't supposed to happen, sorry. I need a mouse. So it also has the ability to say, okay, under this. Default scenario. Twenty six hundred south. I can click on that and it shows me what suggested treatments are and when, so in twenty twenty seven, it looks like a slurry seal. For that section of the road is scheduled, and what that does in twenty twenty seven is bring that pazer rating from a six or a seven to a seven point eight. And then it slowly declines until the next treatment. At six point eight eight in two thousand and thirty one. And so and then by twenty forty one. It does another more aggressive treatment, a chip seal that everyone loves. Where you go and put a. Layer of oil down and then you spread gravel on there, that's a really aggressive treatment, but it also gives you a little bit more lifespan. But you can see this section of road in twenty years. You're investing about two hundred thousand dollars over that twenty years by following this treatment method. What it also does, I'll, I'll show you. The plan manager, so under this four hundred, or the default scenario, it's, it's going back to the default. Maybe. And then we can select the twenty twenty four. So this is one that we wrapped up. Last year. So we took these suggested treatments. And it prints out this map and tells us what we're doing, so in this section of road, what is that? Six forty or two? Four fifty, thank you, it says to do an AP four application. It brings that pazer rating from a seven point five seven to a to an eight. Um, let's see next year, so twenty twenty five. So next year's is suggesting this treatment on twenty six hundred south. Bringing it, it's an arterial road, it's suggesting a slurry seal. And it brings the the pazer rating from seven point five seven up. Now let's say we're like, well, that, we don't have quite three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, the actual cost of the suggested treatments, we're gonna have to start refining that somehow. Like. Chad drives out with Steve and say, oh, this road right here. It's not too bad, why don't we just? Eliminate that, we're gonna extend that another year so we can, we actually have the ability. To make modifications to the suggested plan. And that treatment goes away. And we can also say, well, this one's really bad. This section of twelfth west, south of Niblet Meadows. We suggest a reconstruct. And what that does is. Readjust the budget. Shows that in there and adds that to the, to the deal, so. But we don't want to start doing that a whole lot because through the algorithms, if we follow this plan. We're more likely. Going to be successful in having great roads and staying within that. Four hundred thousand dollar budget, whatever is granted by the the council there. So we plan on just utilizing this as a tool, to try to help suggest what. And Chad also mentioned that in the past, it was just randomness, it's like, oh, we did this road three or four years ago, let's do it again. Or this, this. But it it wasn't based on the condition of the road, it was based on when it was treated last, and with the target of. A timeliness rather than the condition of the road, so what I mean by that is. We want to treat this road every five years, whether it's a pazer eight or six. But every five years we hit that application, so this allows us to maybe extend those live, the, the. The time between treatments. But also help, it ensures that we're maintaining a good level of service and a good condition of roads. So are there any questions on that? I can play with a little bit more things here, um, we can filter treatments. If we just want to see the ones that are completed or not completed, or we can filter it by type of treatment. Um, we can get in this plan builder, something else I didn't show you, I can do it here. We, uh, get into. This treatment data. This we can update each year if prices escalate beyond the five percent, so let's say a, an AP. Five or AP four HA five. Set at two thousand and fifty cents a square yard. We get an increase because, I don't know, tariffs from Canadian oil or something come in, we have to increase that to four. Four.
It's gonna us.
Four dollars. Uh, it's oil, so it'll go four dollars, so we, we, we can adjust these on a, an annual basis. We can also filter this by treatments and. Get a table view of what's proposed each year. Print this off. Give it to our, our, uh. Subcontractor or contractor, they can bid it, combine that with the, it gives them how, amount of, of area there that we're treating. And. And it gives them a map of where that trade is, so this, this is really a robust. Neat system, I, I don't know that it's perfect. But I think it's a great tool that allows to. Methodically treat these roads rather than. Through a time schedule. Any questions on, do we want to see any scenarios? Like, happy to show you some more.
The system is so. It's very complicated, it is. I just wonder if the review in five years, if you do seven. And see if it's actually neat.
How often do those interns look at the road? That's a fantastic, fantastic question, actually, and we, we've actually talked about it internally, like, how do we? Th- this is programmed to say it's degrading at a certain rate. But one road is gonna degrade faster than another possibly, and so to do that timeliness and that, that. Audit, you know, I, I, I would suggest re-driving these in five years. Reevaluating, and if, if we're seeing a difference in the pazer rating that we, that we were programmed versus what we're actually seeing. Make that adjustment logarithmically and then adjust our complete plan after that. And we can do that as often as we need, we do it every five years, ten years, or, or beyond that even.
So train the model. Right?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be very important to audit it to make sure it's, it's act, and then Chad mentioned also that this isn't, this is today's roads. Twenty twenty five Niblet City. It, it adjusts for inflation, but it does not adjust for growth, it, that just is way beyond the capability of this program, but. And maybe that's another reason to revisit it in five years. To re-drive it and and readjust everything, we are going to do yearly. Updates to this map, so it actually plugs in these new roads every year from new subdivisions and things, so they will be accounted for, but. The budget numbers will all stay the same and and the logarithms and the checks will all stay the same, so. It, uh, a five-year check isn't a bad idea.
Other thoughts, questions?
Six thousand.
I have a question, but. I want to chat have more to present, because I wanted to go back to budget.
Yeah, where are we on your presentation?
This, this is a Q and A, and Justin asked a good question too, how much does this cost, so? To, to initiate the drive. Yeah, so to drive the roads, do all the readings, build this, make the edits, uh, we, we've had several iterations with. The engineers and things, it was twelve thousand dollars. There's a six thousand dollar annual fee. For this, and and that'll include our updates to the roads and any other checks and balances we need. And then they do host this information.
So. Just looking at the budget of this year. So does that come out of pavement assessment and planning? Or is the, or do we just take that out of like? Our general street fund?
That's a good question, I was running that through my head, you, if I knew. I was having that same question. We'll probably make our own line for it, just have a special line that's dedicated.
This is no.
Yep. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we could pay for that out of Class C. Class C's really gone up, uh, obviously because gas has gone up, that's where Class C comes from, it's sales tax on gas. And so, uh, it goes up with the cost of gas, we get more money. In addition to that, last year was just a weird year, uh, we pulled in, I. They did like a big reset and relook at things and we pulled in six hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars last year. I do not anticipate that to happen again, but three, four hundred would not surprise me. Yeah.
Yeah, so. We anticipate that we'll probably go on some next year or inflation, right? The trade should even be four hundred thousand till two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and six twenty-seven. Is that what you're still hoping for, or you're hoping for next budget year?
Next budget year.
See, we started down the trail of that reserve fund. We took, believe, I don't remember the percentage, twenty-five percent or whatever that number is, and wanted to hold that in reserve for some of these larger construction projects. So now that we have this system and the software in place and we can forecast that a little better, maybe, maybe we could tighten that up a little bit and put less into reserves and put more into the, you know, actual construction. We're gonna have to kind of sort through that a little bit in our minds and figure out how we want to do that.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, that's just what we put into this year. The ending balance for the, will be one point two million in the Class C. There's, there's money there. And that's from saving up over the years. And, you know, one point two sounds like a lot of money until you gotta rebuild a road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe not. That's a great question. And.
That reserve paid for thirty-two-hundred south when we redid that. So I'm part of, yeah, part of that. Took care of that, so I think it's important for that reserve. Just for those.
So like maintain some, one fifty-five more reserves, but also increase the Class C street projects.
Yeah, potentially. Yeah, you could play any game you want there. I mean, it just depends on your philosophy and how you want to do it. You know, I, I've, I kind of tend to, I agree with both of you, the reserves is important. But it's not as important if we've got a solid plan and we're gonna stick to the plan. But then if something weird pops up and something just crazy happens, we've got nothing to take care of that.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just, you know, how you want to play the game.
So, so one of the screen, you know, it's plugged in at four hundred fifty thousand. In two thousand and twenty-six, it shows four hundred thousand dollars. However, down in two thousand and twenty-seven, it's, it's actually building a little bit of reserve and you're only spending maybe a hundred and eighty thousand. I can't tell the exact number. If you hover over it, it'll tell you a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. But the following year, you're up, you're up into seven hundred thousand, seven hundred eleven. So, yeah, actually.
It's more strategic this way, as opposed to what we started here was just kind of like, yeah, we'll take twenty-five percent and throw it in the bank and we'll spend the rest. So.
Counselor, I saw you seen the budget. I didn't want to see like, we got a whole bunch of money this year. Well, he's not looking, actually, all the time it's not too seven. So we're talking about, Justin clarified.
Two, two quick questions. So folks, remember going to Utah League of Cities and Towns many, many years ago where I think it was something called, it was pitched over and over, I think it was Utah State University LTAP? Local Technical Assistance Program? What, and I, and I was under the impression, this is, it goes back long enough that my memory might be faulty. I thought we were actually participating in that program in Nibley City. But I, I, I think this, this thing in Form Street sounds great. So no pejorative comment about whether we should be doing LTAP or, is LTAP still around?
They are still around. We did attempt to do this with LTAP.
This is the best product we're trapped. Okay.
Before we, or someone to do this, where I was like, LTAP gave us the cost of this. It was a little cheaper, but these guys are professionals. Hopefully they're interns who are training their students.
Yeah, I, I think that.
The thing is students, they just don't.
Costs, the return on investment of what we're spending from what the numbers you gave us is well worth it. I'm planning about that at all. My second question is to reduce those graphics to a level that mayors can understand. Can we make reconstruction something other than green? I mean, green is good.
Green means a lot of money, right? Green is money.
Shades of orange.
At least you can see them.
Did Borax change it for you or is that?
They said, hey, we changed it, it's clown colors.
Green is good.
Green, then pacer rating after.
The only other thing I would just throw out, this is awesome and strategically, I love it because in the past, what we did is with the, with the HA five, we really focused on trying to keep new roads new.
That's the slurry seal.
That, no, that's different. That's the silk. It's basically a water sealer and sunscreen. And the theory is if you keep the newer roads nice, they taper off and then you bring them back up and they stay up longer than if you just let them deteriorate, goes nothing. So, so when some people say, you know, why are you over there messing with that road? It's only three or four years old and this one over here is falling apart. It's because we know that by putting the money into this road, it's gonna last longer and strategically waiting for the right time. This one's past its prime. We just need to let it go till we need to reconstruct it and the money comes out better in the end. So I think it causes, if people are watching and caring or paying attention, it does cause a little confusion sometimes when people are like, why are you doing all the new roads? It's because it is way cheaper to keep new roads nice than it is to reconstruct old roads. There is, there is method to the madness and it's not random. Yes.
Roads have problems, they crack and so on, they lose flexibility, right? Payment loses flexibility and that's because all the molecules that come off the oil are stuff that was built into the asphalt. So you, you know, you get the trucks and cars and especially when the asphalt can't bend and break.
So you need to keep putting the volatile compounds on, the way I see it.
Well, it's hard, it's, it's hard to put them back. You have to keep them from leaning.
Chad, thank you. You know, Kate? That takes us up to, I believe we're on a discussion consideration for apartments twenty-five dash oh three emitting Nibley City code related to stormwater system operation and maintenance. Well, that is worth the time. All right, man. Chad, take it away. Good job.
So, I didn't do a review to get it from this. So what happened is on November twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty-three, Nibley City had the wonderful chance to give the BEQ. And just kind of background history. And so it's weird, I'm a sport. I have a project starting in two thousand and three. This is the first interview. So preference, that was only a year in this department. So we hear a lot, we just get to and you hear, and it was exactly opposite. We're back here, maybe we can hear. And the notes here that's this is the city shop, this is the joint. They, everybody was amazing helping. So what they did is the state came down, I mean, for three days. And in November twenty eighth, I think it was like ten degrees. Freezing, it didn't rain. Any weather. So what they did is, on the first day, they, they went and checked two construction sites. One was Nibley Farms and the other was just the regimens. And after that, they came in and they came into our public works office and we blew out everything. I mean, everything. And and they found a lot of needs that were anything without the work. They kept, they kept saying this was pretty, pretty lucky. They did it around a lot to the other cities. But right now, and so they, they wrote their say, action items we corrected. They took about three months to write, I mean, it was six months to correct. We, so we had sixty-five action items and we have completed sixty-four of them. This is the sixty-five. So in, in the notes, it does say that's that we asked for an extension because we got lucky and they're gonna start trading the decision again in springtime. So we asked for an extension, maybe not us. So, and it's just a couple changes in, in the system operations and the definitions. I don't know if you guys have a chance to read that? Okay. Questions? What we have? It's pretty straightforward. And like I said before, unfortunately, I see it back in spring with some more things. Yeah, like I said, it was, it was a very informative audit. Learned a lot. We all learned a lot. Good, good experience for us. All you need to do is change this.
Thanks, Chad. Questions for Chad before we turn to counsel? Thank you. You'll be here for questions if things come up, I'm sure. So counsel, we turn to you. Their staff recommendation is for first reading, so this would be a great chance. If you're going to go at first reading to get questions clarified and understand what's being proposed. Do we need to schedule a public hearing on this? Okay, so it will be for first reading then.
Yeah, that is the case of three of these next one.
On time for these, so my apologies there, but we need to see these back.
The first reading, second reading is our default operation. Motion from Nathan to approve first reading and second from Cage to be here. Discussion on the motion to approve for first reading, please.
Public hearing is good.
Okay. Uh, any, any opposition to voting on that motion? Okay, let's proceed. Those in favor of approval for first reading, please say aye. Any opposed? Yes, thank you very much. Jeff, thanks. The usual, appreciate your efforts and your all the growth. Now for something we hope you'll really like. Uh, next up is resolution twenty-five oh one, first resolution for two thousand and twenty-five. This would be appointing Nibley City Planning Commissioners and the chair and vice chair. So I, I had great discussions with each member of the planning commission. Despite those very, I think, very productive discussions, there's not a lot, there's no change on the roster being proposed. So Karina is I'm recommending her and asking for your consent to have Karina do another five-year term. And she would like to do that and that's, that's one change. The other is chair and, and vice chair. So the planning commissioners seem to like to rotate this around. And so I'm recommending for your consent, Nick Kinska as chair and then slip Claire over into vice chair. Questions?
Yeah, just on the, yeah. What do you call this, it's a machine? Thank you, the resolution. Just Karina needs to be listed as through two thousand and twenty-one.
The only shoulder till two thousand and twenty-six.
Yeah, the, the report shows two thousand and twenty-nine. And it's a five-year term, so it should be twenty twenty-one.
Is it January or is it twenty thirty? January thirty-first, twenty thirty.
Starting, it's starting in January.
If it's five years, it's twenty thirty. January of twenty, it's January.
That right? Change Karina Brown in the resolution twenty-five dash oh one, the January thirty-first, twenty thirty. Is there an objection? So you the cats, the dogs. And a question of mayor, please, your discussions with Danny? And maybe even Claire could talk about, because I didn't intend to meet this chair. How was attendance? People getting to the media because. Thank you, Claire. I'm not boxing you around. I'm asking politely, come to the mic.
Only the last meeting, we had a short each other about people having meetings, the research council, we didn't have a so generally there have been people there ranking the race.
There were some accidents, health kinds of things that went on. We won't violate any HIPAA things, but it was unanticipated. Thought about it.
Yeah, right. People got sick and, yeah.
Yeah, listen. Things come.
That was the only one.
Yeah, so that's an improvement that we had.
Counselors, that's when your discussion, did you discuss that with, you need to attend your meetings?
I had that discussion with people last year. And I, in my opinion, I saw, we saw an improvement this year.
Pretty much, yeah, we pretty much had a full quarter. And Troy, our member had the vote except that type of lines.
As the, as the ultimate. And your attendance on the planning commission was stellar and we appreciate that. I'm gonna accept a question, I should show up. Any other thoughts? If the council is willing to waive second reading on this, which I would love to. I mean, it's not, it's not do or die, but then this would be official for the planning commission's first uh, first meeting in a week or.
In a week.
Yeah.
The motion to, for a resolution to show one from the Nibley City planning commissioners and the chair and vice chair as presented.
Actually, you do, because I jumped the gun. I asked for consent to modify something that did not have a motion. So if you would include that in the main motion, that would.
Include the twenty-six.
Twenty thirty for Karina Brown?
Yeah.
And thanks for. Okay, motions to through the resolution twenty-five dash oh one with a modification on Karina's term and to waive second reading and a second from long. Thank you, discussion, please. Uh, maybe.
Yeah, I love this group of people. They've done this best year beyond that. I just want to specifically point out Troy, I think he's gonna we're necessarily considering less of a member. But I, I would, I would have a argument that there's changes or you can find the attendance or participation. Is not he considers the next man of the policy, but I just wanted to.
I just wanted to. Show my appreciation for specifically some of the.
Other comments? Is there an objection to voting? Seeing no objection, we'll proceed with voting. Sorry, this call for us.
In favor?
In favor.
Uh unanimous, five in favor and opposed, thank you, council. And Levi, uh thank you. For the technical assistance you give this group as our player. Everybody okay? Let's let's blast on to uh discussion and consideration for amendments to Nibley City code. Uh related to water theft and infringement of city staff access to water meter vaults. And this will be for first reading.
Correct.
Justin, you gonna present that for us? Thank you.
Yep, so this is cleaning up and kind of tying off a bow on the consolidated fee schedules you guys passed into a couple meetings ago. We added a couple of fees on there that we necessarily didn't have. Code for yet, and so we needed to make sure that we have the code to back up what these fees are and the the fees are um. Been having some issues with landscapers burying and impeding access basically to our water meter vaults. There's a lot of reasons we need to get to those water meters. I mean, I know sometimes it's pretty variable. It's not often, but it seems like when it is, sometimes it's timely, we have leaks going on, those things. Become a big problem when we can't see them, we can't find them, we can't get in them, so. Spent a fair amount of time with staff. This last year. As what the infringement changes are is really just to put a penalty in our code. That allows us to charge a a fee for if someone does something like that. The other one is water theft and it was kind of already covered in the code, but we wanted to strengthen it a little bit and make sure it was very clear. There's been some changes with other towns around us that may get likely, we might see some more people trying to come in and get some water and. There's a lot of reasons we want to do. Have them in a controlled manner, make sure that they, one, are paying for the water, and two, that they're doing it safely without pressurized trucks and they have air gaps. Safety things for backbones and things like that. So so these are just a few code amendments that the. City staff is requesting to strengthen and give us the ability to charge fees and penalties for people violating. Happy to answer your questions. Correct.
All right, Justin, one. One question I have about a reading and I'm. You know landscapers and stuff burying these things. Is the homeowner even aware that?
Sometimes not. That might be an issue. It could be, and you know, we may. You know. I mean, do we do a warning first, maybe this is probably basically rectified, let that, you know, their landscape was in excess. I think it depends maybe on. I mean, our intent is to cover costs, right? So if if we notice there's an issue and we have the ability to work with the homeowner to fix it and not. Spend a bunch of money and time, then I don't know. But if it is timely and we have to exert a lot of effort, I mean, sometimes it takes two, three hours. Dig these things up, even to find sometime, uh in one case, the only reason we're finding this because we have a GIS and. Good job going there and marking these things are, if it had been older. It's probably still be looking. Yeah, I mean, we've had a very, we've had. The, you know, kind of blocking management. Another another reason is uh, you know, we tried really hard to look for unaccounted for water. And sometimes we get leaks on these joints, right? Where these these pipes come up and hook to a meter and there's just a lot of joints in there, so we. Uh quite often send interns around to check down and look for those kind of leaks, because if the leak is on the wrong side of the meter, we don't. We don't know about it and we're not getting income for it. And so. You know, just, I guess, just trying to drive a point home. It is important for us to get into those. Look at those and you know, if we have to work with the homeowner, it's it might depend on the situation. Yeah, there might, there there may be some education. We've talked about that, maybe do an education campaign on Facebook later. You know, what are these or why are they here with them? Uh definitely a good idea to do that.
So I. And it's not because my bride or me or any landscaper covered it up, it's because. Three leaves had been falling. For about thirty years. And it might have been. The vault might have been a little bit low in first place, and so that's a natural place for leaves to fall and decompose and. The, so, so I mean, I think we're gonna have to write God a ticket for that one. Uh we let the trees grow, but we didn't pile the leaves there. Yeah, I really think this is. Gonna be for those people there. But um I think the problem gets worse. Now, I I mean, this is not new, it's it's not recent history, but we don't pull those covers off to read the meters anymore. Correct. You all know there's radios and hens on there. So that. That memory fades. As to where that meter is. Other things for you all to think about. I'll show you where mine is and if I, when we, when we die or sell the house. We'll put it in our well, something. Operator's manual for all the data loggers that run stock and property. We're gonna try that on him first.
It was made really clear to me when I purchased our first home, how we needed to be aware of that. It was a huge part of, you need to know, we're gases, we're watering. All these being part of the debate to your vault, to the city. It wasn't as enforced with later purchases.
Who who uh who motivated that education if you don't mind me asking?
That's the most. Working with our landlord and. It'd it'd be huge, you know, I'm just pretty curious, that's a different experience than what most people, so they're game and hey, you're responsible.
I mean, a lender has dog in that hunt because they don't want the house burned down because you can't shut off a gas meter, right? Or flood your house because. You can't turn off the water. Right? So it makes sense that the lender would would be providing that education.
It was in a different state, so it's a state thing or it's just.
There's a big packet of stuff we do with welcome to Nibley. Not, we might be deluding that information. I mean, that's great, I know maybe Nibley City should. Include that as a welcome, the welcome wagon. It's not welcome wagon, but welcome to Nibley package. They don't find it. Thank you, Justin. Uh Nora? Metal detector helps, I bet.
It does, but they don't work well in snow. And they don't work when there's. Uh pins holding down weed fabric. Uh so they're not the adult.
I mean, they were clean outs of yet another, I don't know where they are. All right, uh. You ready for a motion? Someone ready to make a motion? Nora, thank you. Motion from Nora for approval on first reading, a second from Cage. Thank you. Oh wait, there's her. It was, hey, nice to hear, but you were sleeping with. Discussing on the motion to approve for first reading?
This one's not about the this, but we. In a pod, you said about the. Waterline going in, if it had led or stuff that we put in, but we hope we stay.
Uh we finished up phase one of the requirements. Uh phase two, I'm not sure we got a good start on, I believe. But it's a little more in depth of asking questions and checking on stuff, and so we are, we're, it's a continued process over the next few years. Okay. And so we, you know, we can send out, you know, we ask people, hey, can you help us? Can you go look in your basement? Can you identify? Can you send us a picture? And try to do a stuff as much as possible through email and pictures as opposed to spending a ton of staff time. It is where we're at right now, and at some point, it's gonna just be knocking on doors and asking if we can go in their basement and see what kind of water line they got.
Was I supposed to said something?
Uh you got a letter?
I don't look at the mail very often. I should. Uh other discussions. Any opposition to voting on first readings? Uh uh those in favor to advance the second reading at the first reading? Please say aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, let's do some more stuff. The ordinance twenty five dash oh two adjusts in Logan City wastewater treatment impact fees for residential multifamily units. And this will be for first reading as well. We'll schedule a public hearing. You already said that, right, Justin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh was good.
Okay, so this uh comes out of, I just recently attended the Logan or. Called this thing these days, the Logan Wastewater Treatment Plant Rate Setting Committee, which consists of North Logan, Nibley. Providence, Logan. Smithville. Each have representatives on that committee. Uh they meet once a year to discuss the treatment plant and. How much flow is coming in from each municipality, distribute voting percentages and and whatnot, and really the thing that came out of this year's meeting. Was a result of. Well, um. Really a question in fairness of how the impact fee was charged. Often, in history, impact fees have been charged on size of meter, regardless of how many units were hooked to that meter, and so as an example. Uh some developments will push for a two inch meter, put a hundred condo units on that one two inch meter, they would only pay a two inch. Impact fee, which will be, you know, thirty five hundred bucks. Um whereas if, and really is there impact any different than than a home? A a unit, and so we kind of got into these questions of fairness and and really to me, it boiled down just to making sure everybody's paying the same. If nothing else at all, should all be the same. And so Logan, we we, Amy and I actually reached out to Logan some time ago and had some of these discussions. And if you're, as you're aware, the Nibley City recently did all of this for all of our other impact fees. We reduced the amount of impact fee per multifamily unit. And now base impact fees off per unit as opposed to just the meter. And so we did that a year ago-ish. And with all of ours, though, we didn't touch the Logan because that's obviously not our impact fee. Well, they're catching up and have decided to. Uh reduce their wastewater treatment impact fee for multifamily units and charge per unit. They took water meter readings. And kind of did their own estimate. On what that percentage reduction should be, and they came up with thirty percent. So they reduced their impact fee thirty percent based on those numbers. We used IBC fixture counts and compared fixture counts of residential homes to townhouses and condos, and we came up with twenty. So ours is only reduced twenty. They're suggesting uh thirty based on their numbers, and that's interesting. I had a. Suzie Becker designs public finance this week to talk about our water rate and so our impact fee. And she had some interesting things to say about, this is kind of bubbling up across the state, and you might see legislation actually this year. That relates to and how impact fees are charged, so uh we may, may not have to tweak it, but. If nothing else, kind of on the leading edge of of doing that, but I just think it's a more fair and more equitable way. And also it's uh make sure that they're covering the costs that we need to cover in that piece, so. I think there was one more, oh yeah, uh so they're. Making this recommendation for the multifamily to be reduced. Then they also said that uh. Really need to look at the impact fee and new, do a new impact fee study, and don't be surprised if this goes up in the next year or two. But multifamily will. For everybody, for single family and multifamily likely go up. They have received some grants and some things, and they're looking to construct bioreactor form and trying to work towards making that happen, getting that done, so. Any questions?
We have input. Thank you, Justin, for being on the set of committee. The the members of the committee both their pro-rata portion. So we sent to plan. Logan's sixty six or sixty seven percent.
Yeah.
Okay, uh thanks. Um I would entertain a motion if you're ready.
Motion to approve on this twenty five to.
Thank you, Nora. Uh motion to approve first reading. Discussion, please. I I I think that uh you and Amy, by the way, I mean, you did a nice job of. Actually, I think doing the right thing before Logan realized they were doing the wrong thing. So.
Well, we actually, you know, honestly. We tried to open that car, we had a townhouse, I'm saying. Says right here, it's too much meter. Here's your three hundred dollars, three thousand bucks, and they're like, oh no, we want like a long.
Yeah, but you charge, you charge the. More than what Logan said.
Yeah, we got for everything else, not for what Logan did, so we we had to kind of, we we had to. That's how we do it. Why don't you do it that way? And started doing it that way, because he told me he was gonna get on and make the code changes, and a year and a half later, here are the code changes.
He be.
Correct. Big news. Yeah, his replacement's already been named. His name's Tyler Richards. He's. He's uh he's been to Logan City for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any opposition to voting? Seeing none, let's let's uh vote. This is to approve. Yes, thank you, Justin. Thank you, council. I bet we can get through this uh. Annexation submission.
Yeah, this um this is, this is a little bit of deja vu, kind of bringing this back to it, uh. But but with with a change, um so. So as as you might remember, this this annexation um uh between twelve hundred west and fifteen hundred west, about thirty six hundred south there. Um. Being proposed. It, the council already approved um and the annexation, or accepted the annexation, not approved, but. Accepted the annexation petition for further consideration on October twenty fourth. Um however, as you might, as you might recall, that that annexation included an unincorporated peninsula. And um one of the requirements for annexing an area that that um. Creates an unincorporated peninsula is that both the county and the city have to agree to that. Um so it was put in front of the Cache County Council and um. With with some input from their staff, they they expressed concerns about uh fifteen hundred west. And I'll I'll bring up the the map so you can kind of show the, so I can show the area there. But uh there there's a section of fifteen hundred west, you know, if that annexation were. Uh the 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 previous petition were to be approved. Where uh you know, you would have a section of road in Nibley, a small section that would be county, and then again. You know, a section in, in, in Nibley, and there's, there's some inefficiencies with that. They didn't, they didn't, you know, they had some concerns with that. Uh, we also, uh, you know, after, after discussing it, you know, Tom, Tom in particular brought up the concern with utilities and. Co-locating uki- utilities in a county or in a county road. Um, there's some issues with that as well. And so, uh, anyway, the county council expressed concerns. They did, they, they ultimately, they didn't approve that, um, annexation, um. The, the petition, the, they, they didn't approve the, the area that was being proposed because of this issue with the fifteen hundred west right of way. Um, and they suggested that their, that their staff, uh, talked to, to Nibley City about it. So we, we did hold a meeting. Um, we've had, we've had some communication with, with the, the city staff there from, or the county staff. About this issue and the, the. The solution that we're proposing and, and that is coming in front of you in, in the form of this new annexation petition. Is to annex, um, the entire fifteen hundred west, uh. Right of way. Um, from, from the southern border of, of this annexation to, you know, the, the southern border of our, our current boundary. So then you don't have that gap there. Um, that would take care of, you know, the kind of the, the county's, uh. Concerned with, with the maintenance of, of the road, um, as well as, you know, the other issues like I mentioned. Um. So this, this is a new annexation petition. Uh, we, we talked to our attorney of whether we could just kind of continue the process with just this. Amendment, and there's not really an amendment process for annexations. So you kind of have to, you know, start over that process, at least at the point of, of the annexation petition. And so that's what's in front of you today. Um. The, this is what, what was proposed previously. What's up on the screen there? So you see, you know, it include, includes these three parcels. Um, and then this is what they have submitted and, and, um, as an updated. Uh, annexation petition. And you can see kind of that cherry stem fifteen hundred west that goes along this property, which isn't included. In this, in this petition. And so rather than an unincorporated peninsula, this would create an unincorporated island. Um. But the, the approval process is the same, whether it's a peninsula or an island. Um, as far as state code is concerned. Uh. That, you know, the, like, both, both the Cache, the Cache County Council and, and the Nibley City Council aren't obligated to approve. This, this proposal either, but this was a. Uh, you know, it's a legislative decision for you, um, as well as, you know, the Cache, the Cache County Council. If, if you don't like this, you know, there are other. Options out there, but this, this was a, a way to kind of resolve. The issue of the maintenance of fifteen hundred west, um, and, and, you know, the utilities and the roadway. We, we feel that, you know, it would, it would resolve kind of those issues. And Tom, I don't know if you want to, if, if you want to add anything about that, you can, uh. If you think that was, you know, sufficient, but Tom, you know, Tom's been involved through this process and. Suggested this, this remedy of fifteen hundred west and, and then. So that, so, so then the applicant came back with it, with this up, updated plan. So staff's recommendation is to accept this annexation petition for further consideration. Again, it's kind of taking a step back in the process. To, to where we're on October, when you approved this before, and then, and then we'll start again through the protest period and, and it will, it will come back to you. Again, for final, uh, approval. Later, if you were, if you are to approve this tonight. No, it doesn't need a public hearing at this time. No.
Definitely. See. Certainly, the planning commission. We could also skip to one.
Yeah, and there, there was, and, and I, maybe I'll speak to that, the planning commission. This, this was already, the, the zoning portion of it was already considered at planning commission. And I don't, I don't think, we don't need to take it back to planning commission because really all they, they considered the zoning of those three parcels. Uh. The roadway. Uh, I don't, I don't believe that's, that's really a planning commission. Uh, decision because, because with annexations, it's, it's just, it just has to do with the zoning itself. I mean, I guess unless we're zoning the road, but I don't, we don't typically do that. Right, so. So I, I, I don't think it needs to go back to planning commission, but I, I do believe there is a public hearing. At the time, the, you know, the, the city council would consider this. Uh, you know, before approval. I'd have to look at state code again. I always get mixed up on annexation.
To have the council. You guys can guide me on this. I mean, I have council, public hearing when the. Proposal for annexation rather than the proposal to accept an application for annexation comes up.
Yeah, and there was, and there was a public hearing for the zoning. Just the, just the zoning consideration at planning commission, but, but that's just the zoning, not, not the actual annexation.
Questions for five? Comments or? Motion to approve. Acceptance of the annexation petition. Motion from Norm to accept the petition for annexation. Second from. Okay, thank you. Comments or questions?
So to give the rest of it, you gotta wait till they want to annex it anyways, so.
Yeah, and that landowner was at the public hearing. Of planning commission, you guys keep me on the right track. He made an emphatic point. At, at the land, you can look at parts of yours, Jim Zollinger. He made an emphatic point. I don't want to be in Nibley. And he's not part of. His property is not part of this. Uh, application.
It's, it's wants to stay in county.
Right. And, you know, I think that says he doesn't want to develop.
Yeah.
Because what's the point of having your agricultural land in city? Just pay. And you pay more tax because of its green belt. So what if, I mean, what, what if you say, no, we don't want, we don't want that little stretch of road. I mean. I understand the county's point of view, absolutely, but. You know. That's not a great road. And. It's, you know, the other parts to the north are being developed by. Developers, the, the right of ways being approved, uh, according to our standards and. Nexus and so on, and stuff to the south is, and so. You know. Or. What, what's the expectation for that chunk of road? Tom?
I'm glad to. If, if, let's just say we change the boundary and don't include. Now, every access onto that, have you approved that's county council's over? If a subdivision came in for a new. Street intersection. Or an individual owner wanted that driveway, they'd have to apply it to county council and give their review approval or deny. So there's one thing.
Which, which, access is on which part of the road? On Jim Zollinger's property or on the other stuff we're accepting? An applica- we might accept an application of?
With the city's boundary, buts. The county road. It would require council approval to access onto the county road. Uh.
Yeah, if, if this, if this weren't included. Right.
If it's half road. Then on our side, where those approvals would go through the normal process that the city makes. Um, the other. Issue would be utilities. There's really no tool. Can we. Has in place that govern utilities to. Water, our water system technically is not a public utility because we don't allow others to connect different oil wells within their county. So. That just, that disqualifies that particular. Utility from being considered public. So now we have. There's some nuances there that staff, that their staff. Express to the council. So I like having a roof. Because if anybody wants to access this road, now we have. Jim Zollinger wants to say, put a fruit stand on the. On this, or I want to build processing plant for tomatoes. Now they have to come to Nibley City to gain access onto our city road. So if the question is, do we want the road? I would suggest yes.
I doubt we got this far on any sort of. Site plan or concept plan, but. Does the proponent for development plan to put utilities in that road? Do they have to? Have they considered? I mean. They didn't ask to have that road in the first place. Do they have another plan to get utilities to this southern property? You know?
I haven't seen the utility plan that.
Yeah, they, they haven't gone that far.
So I guess. They're not. Justin corrected me and your question was the pizerine, is that what? Was that, was that a question? What the condition of?
What is the, what is the number?
It's pretty low. It's, it's green. I mean, it's funny, but. So, regarding the, the condition of the roof, I don't know that we have much to say if we're. Willingly accepting this annexation. Now, if we were going to the county, if the county was saying, we don't want the road, you have to take it because of some other reasons. We might have some leverage there. In this case, I think it's a. No one's pushing it. So I would assume that the city will, would.
The county.
The county's pushing the road, but.
Right.
This, they're not pushing the annexation.
Of the larger, of the other pieces of property.
This was just one concept we were. That we worked through, that we came to. When I approached their staff on what, what is the concern? Why are you considering this? And there's other reasons they said, well, who's gonna plow? Who's gonna treat it? Who's gonna do all the other things? I assured them that we're not gonna come to fifteen hundred west.
That's the plow.
So. They understand the cooperation that Nibley currently has. We, we plow a lot of their roads. Just because it's a lot easier for our equipment to turn around. Stopping back in. Et cetera, so. I, I just don't know if the people making decisions understand. The. The agreement is very, but it's, they're unwritten, but. They work.
Okay, um, and. You know, we're, we're gonna hit into this again, because this is the decision to accept the application. However, accepting the application starts to build an expectation. So, that's why I asked.
Sorry, this is my, I'm losing. Just, just to re, every small. Takes an executive order. From Cache County Executive to change the speed limit on one of their roads. And the current default speed limit is. Fifty or fifty-five miles per hour. So there's another reason if we're bringing fifty miles an hour to, to Nibley's twenty-five miles an hour. And then seven hundred feet of fifty miles an hour, that's kind of a concern that. There's an outrun, just kind of. Yeah, but it's an important thing you really consider. So I'll be quiet.
Oh. Yeah, so.
I just wanted to. I believe that one of the concerns prior from planning and zoning was. The RN zone. Um. More to keep. Adjusting the map every time, um, and that label to start working on.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the next agenda for planning mission. It was on the agenda last month and then we had to cancel. Um, so yeah, yeah, that's. There, there's gonna be a workshop on the RN zone next week. Um, but their recommendation, the zoning recommendation, I guess, that, that will come forward to plant, to city council. The next time this comes in front of you. Although they've already considered that, really, it's, it. It was for. The next time it comes forward.
Oh. I have to remember exactly what the recommendation that was, but you'll, you'll help us for, for when we get to that.
Yeah, yeah, that's. Right. Yep, it is, yep.
Please.
Um, if we. Okay.
Hey, you're smart. Good job. All right. Uh, is there, oh, go ahead, please, yeah.
Was half road discussed with the plan? And you just kind of said, well, we're gonna take some and those will take all?
Yeah, we did, we did talk.
Either one.
Yeah, we did talk about that. We did talk about that in this case, it. It just didn't seem any interest. In taking just half the road.
We didn't?
They didn't have any, their staff, yeah. And, and they, they talked about several instances throughout the county where. Either the, during an annexation, the city takes the road, doesn't take the road, takes, takes half the road. Et cetera. They said each, each case is really individual and they're very, and. Well, what Levi and I have decided to do is when we get these petitions to annex it, to annex a piece of property. We're gonna immediately reach out to the county and say, what are your concerns? How can we avoid these starting over things? And why, why should we take the road? Should we take the road to take half or all? So these discussions are gonna happen a lot earlier moving forward, just so we're not in the same predicament.
And that's great. I think the half road question is kind of more. Correct to that, to face for the improvements. So we could be a half road if. Someone on one side of the road wants to have a developed road, but the right of way. And they. This is kind of the opposite of eight hundred west, north of Clear Creek, where. County owns nothing but the road. Yeah.
Long Island, Rhode Island.
It's, it's a line. And then Millville and Logan own. Property on both sides of the road, so maybe they're. Realizing that was a mistake. And by the way, I, I, I'm not being down on the county. I actually very much appreciate. The. County Planning Department, county development, whatever you want to call it. When they get a. Application in the county that's next to Nibley, they reach out to us, right? How do you guys feel about this? So. So, you know, I. I appreciate them doing that. Okay, have we run out of? Steam on this one? Any opposition to voting? Seeing no objection to that. Cheryl, do we call the roll here? It's not, yeah, okay. I can't remember what we did last time, so let's do what we did last time. Uh, I'm gonna not call the roll. Instead, I'm going to restate the motion, which is to accept the petition for annexation that we have been discussing. And if you're in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. And if you're opposed to that, please say nay.
Nay.
That's four in favor and one opposed. And since we didn't call the roll, that's probably enough detail. Okay, uh, the motion passes. Thank you, um. Stand up and stretch our legs. I don't, I have no preconceived notions about how long. You want to talk about goals unless it's related to the length of our meetings. So let's, uh, if there's no objection, we'll be in recess for a couple minutes. No objection? Okay.
I'll throw one out, um, we, we're. We are. Council has, in my opinion, council has. Been have for a long time, asked for code enforcement to get done. You know. Don't want to get into any details, but we're, we're seeing fallout of enforcing your code. I don't know if that means. Need to keep doing that. So we know if we need to fix the code, but there's a lot of people. Get caught in the crossfire. You know, we went through Anne Land use. Parking. Got other things, so. I just think, uh. Generic look at. Code, code enforcement.
I think that's. He brought it up, you know, why it's violation, end around forty-two, there's no. They're not getting one.
Well, they might be.
Yeah, that's true.
My point now.
We got two. Um, that's. That's gonna happen, that's gonna happen. Althusm leads to. Different outcomes.
Yeah, maybe, I guess, you know, still high level thinking. But maybe also is the B focus code wise or. Some of these kind of things enforcement and then that.
Next slide, our agenda is Councilwoman Wilson for twenty twenty-five. I don't have. Uh, this is, this is an old forum. Mostly not. We don't activate real details on what these goals need, but. You're so inclined. I think the January news, it was Ja- yeah, it was January newsletter was about goals. So I, there's nothing out of the box in that newsletter for me, but that's kind of what. Maybe I guess think about this a little bit and the planning commission, uh. Talks about goals for each year. So I think that's, it's, it's good, so. I'm gonna quit talking and then turn it over to you.
Thanks. Has the planning commission done those yet this year or the country?
No. Uh. No, I mean, no, they haven't been discussed yet for this year.
But we can help them. Yeah, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, I think, I think that would help if there was some direction from the council for sure.
I'll throw one out, um, we, we're. We are. Council has, in my opinion, council has. Been have for a long time, asked for code enforcement to get done. You know. Don't want to get into any details, but we're, we're seeing the fallout of enforcing your code. I don't know if that means. Need to keep doing that. So we know if we need to fix the code, but there's a lot of people. Get caught in the crossfire. You know, we went through Anne Land use. Got parking. Got other things, so. I just think, uh. Generic look at. Code, code enforcement.
I think that's. He brought it up, you know, why it's violation, end around forty-two, there's no. They're not getting one.
Well, they might be.
Yeah, that's true.
My point now.
We got two. Um, that's. That's gonna happen, that's gonna happen.
Althusm leads to. Different outcomes. Yeah, maybe, I guess, you know, still high level thinking. But maybe also is the E focus code wise or. Some of these kind of things enforcement and then that. As I said, just looking at the code and. Strategic manner. Consistent and scheduled kind of manner.
Yeah, okay. Did you follow me? I, I think so, but one question comes up is, you know, let's talk about winter time parking. I don't think that's actually something that would go to the planning.
That's what I'm saying is. They take. Everything we've done that.
Thank you. Uh, I'll throw one out that wasn't in the newsletter. It's not happy news, but we're gonna have to form a. Fire protection district and be part of it. What's going. Yes. But not Logan. From a nineteen sixties. Fire protection contract. Contract, uh, no agreement. Uh, the county is supposed to, and, and with us included. But we're gonna have to pay for it. Have the fire protection district and Logan is specifically. Not included in that district. So it'll be up to the rest of us to do fire protection.
So that would change ha- uh, our contract with. Fire.
Most likely. I mean, I don't see how that contract with iron will survive because that's just us and iron, but. Maybe Wellsville, Wellsville's a part of that too, I think. No, I think they have it all, okay. So that's something we have to figure out. Sorry.
The goal, I think that we, that we probably. Championed by chair, but that we should probably not. Getting language put together for potential. Bonds, uh, uh. So I don't think it's all right. Thank you. So that's the way I'm looking at it. Yeah.
Yeah. Think that one made the newsletter. I think that's very important for us. Have you? These are some. And there was a trivia miracle. I had a lot more to say than what made the article, but that's kind of what you expect.
To, to go along with. Aaron's last one, there's a couple of things that I think we started. Maybe seeing like a. A deadline or a. How far we want to get this year on things like in Iraq and on developing.
So let's, let's make sure economic development is on that list, right?
Yep.
We started talking about a town center design and economic development. Bolts into that, but there's more to it. I mean, actually have more opportunity for economic development.
Just there, it's true. I was trying to talk about this, you know. And they get notification out, oh, we have. Changes. Ordinances are right.
That could fold into our review of our.
Yeah, and we, you know, we're talking about scenarios. You know. He's in the text out to everybody when we do it or whatever it is we do, so that it's. You know, you keep hearing, well, it was too many. You know, I didn't know or, you know. And it was coming too late after it's already gone on. You know, there's, you would, you would find that to get them more engaged or. Be planning or.
Yep. Um, Dean, can I ask, I'm here. I think we should, as the council said. All individually to mention Utah public notice. Every conversation that we have at home. So you talk public notice, scroll down the municipalities, find Nibley, check city council, maybe but. Planning Commission two, I read and sign up for an email.
Just need to get the agenda ahead of time.
The whole information back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So, so they know. Ahead of time what we're gonna do this.
I think that's kind of my stuff in the newsletter.
Uh, let's, let's make that a goal. Put, uh, how to subscribe, new QR code. I don't know.
I'm pretty sure we do. And we mentioned it, um, Facebook. That. We post the agenda and you can visit.
But I think of how to subscribe. I'm not sure if we have that. We do, we do post that it's there. But it might be nice to have a little tutorial.
Yeah.
Right, right. Right.
It's not.
Even though it's done, could we maybe do that in heritage days? Some, there's something to show to people, but we can sign up right now.
Each phone out.
It'd be possible to predict QR code on a utility bill. Like you have a notice as box. It says like if you would like to receive. Step by step, or this is step by step and pattern receipt.
Step by step, or this is step by step and pattern receipt notifications about upcoming agendas.
The QR code wouldn't go through all those steps of buying Nibley City, buying city council, uh.
It could just take you to our website, which explains it quick.
Let me get to review, uh, like where to compare this stuff, like. Have a zoom and some, that's not appropriate, or. Um, in, we're all at the moment, they have a trans student that who did a girls' dorm, so maybe. Do something, whether it's inappropriate or, I don't know, maybe just like a policy. Or even if. National fire, so. Some kind of steps, and we have some.
Now, why don't we get Chris in?
Then who, uh, we hear does not to be said is, is encouraged that all the, have your house in order so that you be well to help others.
Yeah. Um, it was a citizen suggested that Chris has done really well on with Cheryl's help, maybe she's doing all the work, I don't know, but. Every month has a emergency prepared so this letter. Oh, we haven't done it lately?
Did it last year?
Just recycle. We need reminders, so.
In lady dresses gets de-listed.
I, I don't want to build a steed apart. Justin, please. Yeah, and rest of staff, um, this is not a performance review where you say goals with your supervisor for the year, but. Uh, throw them out there, Justin, you're next.
One of my biggest issues right now on top of my mind is reviewing and updating our water and storm water rates. You recall, we kind of pumped it on the whole, uh, truth and taxation and raising property taxes. And potentially deal with some of those other issues, so. I foresee a workshop in the very near future, which we will show you a massive spreadsheet that shows scenarios. Future needs and where we're at with percentages of base rate versus operational costs and some things like that, so. Water rate and storm water rate need to be looked at. I am not aware of the last time the water rate was really adjusted. I mean, we changed how it was charged, but it was all changed. Trying to make sure nobody paid anymore than they were before it was changed, so. Anyway, the rate has not been adjusted in a long time. But we got a lot of information to show you compared to other cities in the valley, uh, some things like that, so. That one's getting, coming at you pretty quick, next month or two probably. At least for water, storm water, we're kind of waiting on some things still.
We, if we don't, if we don't keep going on that, are not raising taxes. Truth and taxation.
Right.
Will be this year's question instead of last year's question.
Yes, we need to get on.
Um, you all with kids that walk to school. We doing okay working with safer routes to school and school community councils, I know Tom and Levi are very involved in that. Are we getting there? Are we, are we getting done, or needs to get done?
Um, my kids just don't want to, that's one more thing to do. But in talking with the crossing guards who are at one, herself and eight, it seems, uh, like I tested, I tested with. Well, guys, the crossing guard and she seemed like she was happy with the change that had been made, she liked having two crossing guards there, she thought that felt well. I don't know if that's something you want to continue, um, but she's, she thought that things had improved since the change.
Okay, and. Do we need to do as well with heritage as we do with Nibley, or are we there? Oh, that's staff.
I don't think we're quite as far with heritage as we are Nibley, but actually.
Okay.
I mean, we're working on it, but I don't think. Or, at least like relationship wise, I don't feel like heritage trust system works with this quite as well as Nibley. Uh, nothing in particular, but if something comes up, then yeah, I'll let you know. It never hurts just to have a presence when we have some of these meetings for them to say like, whoa, city councilman came, just being there, I think they came to the last one. Uh, that helps. Uh, uh, Robbins. And, and it's not like the relationship's bad or soured or anything, it just seems like Nibley's like kind of in a team and in a pocket. Wants to do things and explore things and there it's just kind of like, eh, don't tell us what to do. So.
They have to change inside middle school.
Yeah, that's all dynamic's gonna change.
Maybe two.
It's, it's, yeah, about a year and a half, yeah, twenty, fall twenty six. Yeah, fall twenty six, yeah.
Good to acknowledge all the good stuff that happened last year. Did a great job, like, girls, thought I'm good at, other people, safety and then just make sure. Remember how we got those things, focus on. If this works, appreciate the, you know, trying to streamline.
That was actually something we talked about last year, couldn't do it. Could be a goal for next year is to do a year of reviews. Power. I mean, Nibley City covers a lot of ground, so.
Not only the code portion, but. Leva and I, especially me, I struggle with our land development codes, both the zoning, like nineteen and twenty one. Chapter, so, for example, the weather and protections and sensitive land is only applicable to the open. Observations, conservation. So. I did, I would really like to see maybe some budget, if we can get someone that can allocate, it's really good at heading codes. And you're, to go through at least those two chapters to clean it up, not make changes, but. Just kind of make it more applicable to all zones and just the, just more cool, more cohesive if that's. Possible, so, we'll be requesting some.
Yeah, I think you're articulating. Is, is look at our master plan and some of those kind of things that we've done and. Make sure that what we asking, that we. Is following that, what we're, and change one to the other. That's building incentives for taxing in terms of that one, so. Uh, when I first, uh, got elected, I had. David's up, gave me a PDF. Of all the ordinances, I started kind of meeting it to be comfortable. I didn't do much with it, but I made notes, I guess that's kind of what I'm saying you should do, but maybe, I learned real quick, we don't have the time to do that, so.
It's just a culmination of, oh, we need to address this, so we address it. In a very specific manner rather than really thinking it through, and it's just been years and years of that, I think it's just time to. Gather the forces and just get it all carried through.
Uh, good old days, they, they come back. No planner. Staff was Larry Andrew and Pat Blau part time. Wasn't that, was it? That's when the ordinances were, where the book was written, nobody changed anything when I was up. That's the book, that was the book. You've seen that little blue book.
I think I.
You have a copy.
I found out, yeah. I'm gonna be telling a couple times about our open space, maybe make sure. The open space that requires is useful, or maybe to pull on all areas and stuff, so. Something as you're looking at.
Schedule.
Our recent discussions.
Which ones?
How many? One sixty five, you know, especially sponsored by the county. That's gonna be a big deal.
So, quick note on that, um. There, there's been a weird little bit of delay on that, on contract and this and that and the other, but it sounds like it's about to get moving. There was some discussion about who could pay the contractor, whether it was a county or, I think the state's kind of gonna have to take it over to be the lead. But, it's kind of.
Um, the Logan Main Street. Fifty two million or something for Logan Main Street congestion, that, that's pretty much wrapped up, I, I think we. Participate as well there, but. Made a big deal from there is that you got, start realizing that maybe to reduce congestion on Main Street. They should spend money outside of their jurisdiction. That's, that's your case. The other one, uh, UDOT corridor study from Brigham City to Kent West. Tenth West or the Y, it was the Y, included the Y.
Tenth West.
Really? Because they went down there and looked at an alternative for the Y, anyway, it's fine.
That was, that was the one that you mentioned before, the study went from tenth west, you know, yeah.
That, I don't know how that's gonna conclude. They talked about all kinds of concept plans that would solve things for. The mining company and. What's her name, anyway, uh, you know, and Sarbine and. Huh?
It's good, so.
Yeah, yeah. Wellsville railroad thing where their memory is, and I mean, it was about. Probably five hundred million dollars worth of ideas. And the next thing that needs to happen is redraft the corridor bridge and get it adopted. And I didn't, I don't know if they just ran out of time, we talked about this, but, you know, they started. They threw out the idea, do we really need a stock fight? At twenty six hundred south? Maybe that's gone away.
And one sixty five?
No.
Yeah, that's helpful, I think what I'm being innovative bigger, yes, you got. I think I'd like us to be. Identify where we can be proactive with our neighbors, which includes you, because you guys are, they were us.
Yeah.
What a great opportunity, they're gonna push us off of two roads.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, with, in Iraq, we are very much engaging with our neighbors. Looking at areas where we know where we have. Things we need to work on better, I'd say probably Logan South.
Yeah, um. Speaking of working with the neighbors, let's redouble our efforts to talk about a. End of Nibley and the.
Annexation type conversation we all have.
Well, we don't know, we proposed that, but they haven't adopted it. Now that's another, nah, it's not a UDOT thing, so south corridors.
They went bomb start landing.
Well, we're gonna have to get some money from the CNPO or the COG or something if that's how it gets built.
Well, I, I mean, just having like, let's get, let's start resolving. Orderly workshops with the neighbors.
Uh, speaking of neighbors, this is an immediate goal, actually I promised David there, yeah, Melville, that I would put. There's a specific note, I would put on our next agenda, a discussion. And consideration of supporting Melville on a full intersection at thirty two hundred south. But they came and talked about it. But they want a vote, they want a yes, no.
Agree with us that we'll work with them?
That we will endorse the project. And they'll, they're, they'll go to COG with the COG advocate, because we didn't get it. He's not asking for a financial commitment, he's asking for a neighbor commitment. And they, and we would have to work with them because some of that road is in. Actually, not only in our jurisdiction, but on property that we own.
Yeah.
The city owns.
Great.
Well, that, that, it's a specific question. Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure, those types of things, and then what happens to thirty one, and I mean, it's not a simple place.
I know we were kind of waiting for the whole UDOT study. Maybe an alternative to twenty nine hundred six. It's like they're still in secondary accidents. Eating everybody.
Well, twenty nine hundred and one sixty five.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Justin, I know you're dying.
These are all twenty five goals.
Oh.
Try to do all.
You're looking at the list and ask, asking if we're supposed to get all that done this year. We, we'll win it all, prioritize.
Yeah.
Put some. Okay, are we happy with that? And, and, I mean, these, these things, as you know, we don't have to wait for a. First month of the year to do these types of things. Things pop up. Stop talking about it? Good, let's stop talking about it and move on to counseling staff reports. Thank you for that discussion. Nathan, you're such a nice guy tonight, let's have, just tonight, let's have you start with council and staff. Nothing? I will have you go first next time. Aaron, you wanna go next?
Another thing I was gonna share, well, I think Eric's gonna bring up some. Topic about twelve hundred west, so maybe that. When I spoke with Dave, I sent you a text for this, uh, the Trinity Lutheran Church. And, and he owns the property north of twenty-nine hundred south. And he said that visionary has actually approached them, that potentially buying that property. Built homes, but he didn't think that they would be very interested in that offer. So anyway, he did say he had reached out, was going to reach out to Levi about just learning more about the town center plan. I know that we're gonna start a town center master plan, so.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've started that.
So, he just wanted.
Yeah, we've got a meeting set up with him.
Uh, so, obviously, is. Mr. Loops, the councils. Remember, weekly emails, phone calls, about twelve hundred west. And my question is, is there anything planned to be changed or modified at this time? Twelve hundred west. And then try to drive that out, you know, to work and practice to. See, it's crazy, some of the stuff you see, some car going between the. Red dual mile and the curb and trying to down the line, I think. On the west side. I mean, they, I don't think, a lot of people still don't know how to use it. We just, we get so many emails and phone calls about that, I'm just wondering, is. Anything at this time to make any adjustments or changes to twelve hundred west? No, that's, okay.
And then, the other thing I was gonna ask, and Norman, I've already reached out to Mr. Steve and. And trying to understand all of these different things, uh. I wanna see it from both sides, and so we've asked Steve if we could do a ride along with the ex, maybe start with the snowplow. And, uh, maybe ask the mayor of that. So, just to see it from their end. And then the only thing I wanted to bring in, I had a question on. I've got a group of calls and I had one, and maybe they talked to you. I'm, I'm surprised they had talked, they said they had talked to the mayor of Justin, because it was on. All roads. They may, they gotta take it apparently, uh, during Christmas. And what their questions were receiving, no. And the question they had is, we weren't in the asphalt. And they, they explained to me like, well, I don't, I don't, because I'm sure it's in the right way. And even though you're on the gravel, you're in the right way. To lava, so why would that be an enforcement issue? It's hard to say, they ended up saying, it is the right, right, and you could just asphalt.
Yeah, we actually looked at that today, and it, it covers, it, it basically covers everything in the right away, it, I mean. It, and it doesn't specifically says, say right away, it says where the property line ends. Um, from that point, so, yeah, but that, that is the right away, so, yeah.
Education. With Steve, so.
Yeah, I, I should mention, cause I, I just had a conversation about this today with Evan, I, I think. You know, we tried to improve some of the language there last year, but. I don't know, we may have missed the mark a little bit, and I think that on how we define, you know, where, where people can and can't park. It's probably something to look at, revisit. Sometime, um. I know we're not talking about goals, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just gonna mention like, Garrett, there's a lot of. I'm assuming council's not the only one here, but maybe we are. Letters, and Justin made a great question, we had this conversation about it two months ago. And you said to me, how do you get residents to contact you and retain that there's a concern? Rather than follow that inside, and it comes out there, really upset.
Yeah, so I, the only contact I've had about twelve hundred west is me reaching it. To someone, and, and then we've been trying to set up a meeting since. Tomorrow, we're having a meeting, but that's all I've heard about.
Yeah, I, I hear a lot. That they're talking to you as well. As far as. Garrett, maybe I should try to answer your question, because I have a lot to do, I'm the sole person of. Uh, making an agenda. It's my responsibility for the council to have an agenda, and if three of you. And it's not gonna take three for most things, I promise. Want something on the agenda, you can force me to put something on the agenda. And as I said, I mean, that's the letter of the law. I'm operating on the resolution the council passed. So, to me. Uh, that's the council's statement on it. But the council has the right to change their mind. Until I hear from you that you've changed, you know. Enough of you. And it wasn't a unanimous decision by any, by any means. I'm going on what the council said about. Minor changes, and I think that's what you're asking, are there minor changes? Uh, I. When that came up in the discussion, you know, of the council, I think that staff is. Gonna be air on the side of, let's go ask the council before the staff makes any changes. So, you can probably pretty much count on it, staff is gonna think about a minor change, they'll be here asking about. True?
True, so maybe one smaller, I, there are some, uh, temporary cone pylons out there. We're talking about maybe getting those nailed to the ground, trying to prevent people from pulling down into the. By, I mean, that's some of those discussions, we just haven't materialized anything yet. So, I, I apologize, we are talking about that. I know that she's come up a few times.
Christmas is. His sister was visiting and she's the traffic engineer and sounds. And so I made that, to multiple of us have all these motivations, and so I said, well, ask her if she's willing or not. For to decode, and we're violating. So. I mean, I'm guessing there isn't, maybe, maybe we take some of the money from the visionary and. Ask another traffic engineer saying. Uh, is this. Eighty seconds, I always wouldn't be so bad.
Do we have, uh, traffic cameras over here, Steve?
If it might be helpful, and I don't want this attorney to survive session, but if we invite. People from the neighborhood north of Stone. Where there's, the road is now opening with the new natural barriers there, from that other street, is it? Could be between Stone Ridge and. It's like twenty-eight hundred south, is that true? Anyway, I haven't heard from any of those, uh, residents yet, whether they like it or not, um, but it might work gathering their needs also. And if you're gonna do a ride along with Steve and Snowpot egg, that'd be great feedback. I also thought it might be helpful if we could talk to our, um, county sheriff and see if there have been any issues in terms of. Issue specifically with the traffic slowing measures on twelve west since they've opened and they've been going now for a couple of months. Um, just to hear from their point of view as well, so maybe this is something, if we could gather some feedback from a few different places and. And to readdress this issue on, as an agenda item here in a meeting or two.
Sure. Right, again, I'm going. I, I think that fits within the education part of the resolution. And if you, if you want to. Change your mind, the resolution, it's mine too. Uh, if, when we talk about. What you mentioned with other people outside of Stonebridge, I actually. We had a whole roomful of people on eight and ten. I would love to hear what they think.
Oh, well, we had that.
It was a meeting, it was a city council meeting, right, they were begging traffic coming down. Maybe people don't know what they really want, and maybe they do.
Yeah.
And there's a huge part of the education thing. Because. There's been some tours that I've been on and even people that ride a bike. They say, how's this supposed to work? I explain it, then they go, I take back every bad thing I said about you. Only one or two people have said.
Just because he's here, remind, we could ask Chad, well, he lives in that area, I'm curious, he's seven. Uh, it's a Stonebridge, east of twelve.
If you want to, you don't.
No, it's totally fine, I, cause I go that way now. It's a lot faster. I, I have a little truck. And there. There was just one. And since I guess, the lady came and did not stop, and it stopped.
Right, she ran past it.
Yeah, so. But all the, all the things that I've seen of any traffic. Would like to take here and out of Stonefellow. It's a little challenging. I think there's, there are these solutions, but. Um, at first, neighbors. I'm not saying that I don't like it. I love, you know, I love my neighbors, but sometimes. I don't, first, I've opened it, there's planes. I haven't heard too many. Think there's a good figure it out. I. If you take it as, you should, it's fine. That's how I feel, and we were, my biggest concern about snow piles is that we hit the whole dots. That we stick out very far, but they really do.
The, the apple curbs, right?
I'm telling you, we had a justice spell this year, it's been great. But, I, if you just say that you shouldn't, it does slow you down. We, we pulled out, do so, yeah, that's a good thing. It was more shock. And clearing up the road. There are people still use that, like. Like it in when it's twenty degrees. Just pay attention to that, I think it's been, from my experience. And if. The people might, if they complain about it, they will go.
Yes.
Honestly, so, or they didn't.
Hey, let's, uh, you let me know, you wanna know the agenda? What specifics? Let's do it.
I was mostly talking, like, planning on just talking to staff about things that I've witnessed at the sessions with, but maybe. Uh, cancel up to, like, Karen chat, but maybe we just do a workshop. Not open, like, public meetings, I think just a workshop of us having a conversation with this. After we go and do something, I think that would be next month or so.
But it wouldn't hurt to maybe reach out to some people who we've had meetings with before and say. FYI, if you'd like to come to this public hearing, we are having a workshop later in the meeting to discuss this, if you want to stick around with us.
Yeah, yeah, I think what I'm saying is, we go out and continue to do our research and take what people have given us, where staff is doing, and we come back and it's. See how it's going.
What we shoot for two or three weeks now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then, my, my one question to be to staff on that, is there something else we could be doing to get more educated? I mean, I, I want to be just no color, right, because I want to see it from that side, but if there's additional things and ride alongs we can do. I look for gaining every bit of knowledge of council, and inform what we talk to people.
The bus tour in the summer is awesome.
Are, you're talking about more than twelve west, or you're talking about twelve?
Generally, that's the issue, most right now, but.
Are you ready to ask him for his report?
Yeah, well, to that end, uh, really. I don't have specifics to tell you, but. We'll show you anything and everything. We'll harness you.
Whether it's CEO, cause I want to see it from memory eight. You just tell me what view you have.
I just want to feel two. Experience of weeks management, which I don't think is generally the feedback that you get. And, so.
You say positive?
Yes. We had. And when I went on my, it's a super easy. Little dress and they, um, guaranteed a little rest of problem in five days. But then we're chasing three, which I thought was pretty awesome. That we come and address the camps back, but it was not a regular day that they have been coming through. They weren't done even hurt, but I had, I think that day, they. I didn't worry about camp. So you had, you scheduled a date that you want. So it was the third of January, it wasn't gonna be the first, but it was on the second. They just told me to pick something within the five days. I just had to say, they did a great job.
Anything else before we go to the most?
Side pictures for Parkland grass, but he also. Said also, he appreciates that the ticket on the road, cause his neighbors are always parking the road, and since then, they haven't been parking on it. So that's one positive. Yeah, we would. He did appreciate. This is Justin Hops, this is Jason, I.
I got you.
Yeah. Just maybe if I may, throw on the, on the phone, he does a really cool thing at Christmas time. He's gotten into collecting cars, fixing them and giving them to people. So, and he's getting quite a following and support with that, I think it gave, we like a lot of cars this year, is that right? Maybe that's good, then, yeah, anyway, he's. Look, he's, 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 he's an animated guy, so.
Okay, let's leave it.
Um, so, we're, we're about ready to kick off our general plan, I'm still looking for at least one representative from city council. To serve on the steering committee. And the and the selection committee. So we just we just closed the bid time for that. Couple of days ago. If anyone.
Yeah, how many faces did you get?
Believe we got. Four or five, I'd have to check, uh cause I just came back in the office. I was going through all my emails. Yeah, we got it. We got a good amount. I think it's good variety. Haven't I haven't been able to look at them yet, but. For the general plan. It's a bit, it's a big one. Yeah. The general plan. General plan update. Yeah, so we if we if mayor can, but also another council member, that would be great. Garrett, okay, great. For both both the selection and the and the steering committee, so selecting the consultant and then. Um, okay, sounds good. And that's all that's all I've got for now.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. Hopefully made it around. It was a a correspondence with a bunch of pictures. Of uh county code enforcement issues and. It's interesting, someone anonymously dropped that in the box and. I didn't think I'd add it for ten minutes. I was driving down to talk to tell us Steve about it and. Our code enforcement officer was already writing warning letters to our public course department. So uh he was already uh talking about that and it was kind of it's kind of, you know. Pushing the sidewalks has always been a big priority for us. It's something we decided we want to pay our staff overtime to do. Um but with, you know, we're gonna really start enforcing our code, uh weekends if you want. Getting that snow moved, so we're gonna start doing a better job of keeping those plowed and or maybe talk about maybe changing that code to twenty four hours, maybe. Uh that's just something we can look at, but but we have decided, you know, unless you tell me not to, we're we are gonna direct our staff to do a better job of. Uh pushing those sidewalks, which really just amounts to more overtime. Uh more calls, so uh making that happen. Uh wanted to let you know if anybody's interested, the Blacksmith Fork Irrigation. Annual meeting is on Tuesday. Could be entertaining, five P M. Here. If you'd like, uh quick update on our indoor rec. Feasibility study, we have issued a survey for all the surrounding communities, uh asking them questions about. Uh things that may, you know, help us make a decision in what we want to do. Uh higher cities agree to uh push that. I think they already have. I think Wellsville already has. Chad got men and committed tonight. Chad was at their city council meeting tonight. Um I've given it to Millville, but they're very lukewarm, uh so if anybody knows anybody uh millville wise that could push that. You know, maybe if there's a mayor that wants us to support them on something, we could. Uh reciprocate that, but I've given it to their city staff. And uh one of their council members, I believe Chad was hoping you were gonna talk to problems. Okay, yeah, so anyway, we're that that. That's just kind of a surrounding community. Say, what do you guys think about A, this B, and you know, kind of just help us to make it soon. So there's there's movement, it's progress moving there. Those limits, good discussion with I E C, uh they requested a follow meeting. So I think you're you're moving along there. And that is all, yeah. Unless you have any questions for me.
I was gonna suggest, you know, weekends is hard. Maybe we should start an ad hoc sidewalk program. The clearance.
Well, I you know, our rationale for not doing that is was because we clear the routes for school. Right? So thirty two hundred south, eighth west, twenty six hundred south, there's a lot of stuff that's not developed. Nobody's gonna go out there and plow those street sidewalks that aren't developed and their routes to school. And so we thought, you know, well, we'd survive the weekend and we'll get it clean. We'll start early Monday, but we didn't want to bring people in on, you know, Saturday, Sunday, do these kind of things. So. But our code says twenty four hours, so. We talked about whether we should just see stuff, uh you know, city properties, but really if we're gonna go out and do it. Get to get it all done, so. That's our plan right now. We may, we'll see how that goes and mayor may not bring that back to you for.
City stuff, we're gonna. Clear every sidewalk in Nibley, well, thirty two and south. Oh, so there's a few key route we.
Wow, there's certain routes.
A bunch of sidewalk in. I'm not aware. Anywhere, they'll do that, but we've we've purchased special equipment. We've tried to do things, you know, highway is a super big challenge because you get all the snow from UDOT. It's heavy, it's frozen, it's wet, it's deep. Uh so we do the highway, we do twenty six hundred south, east west, thirty two, just just key like routes to school. So I think we. On twelve west, I guess that's all we talk about in twelve west. We we said to the cog, we will keep the pedestrian and and bike stuff plowed.
Yes.
That's all the things. There's actually. Says, hey, we bust sidewalks. You know, okay, that's cool. Also kind of how it's priorities, what we do, how we do it, I may, we probably look at that, maybe update a little bit, just double checking. Yeah, just like what is our priority? Where do we start? And when do we start? I think we've maybe tweaked a few things since we wrote that last.
That's under streets.
Yeah, it's okay.
Not date on thirteen hundred west road. We I just went through the bidding documents and contract like. I could have that thing ready to advertise by next week and. Hopefully bring a, I can't get a contract in front of you by the end of this month, but have one ready to have for consideration on February twenty. Council meeting. So. I think we have a declaration day slated for about October. Looking at their staff's been working on hazard risk assessment and mitigation plan update. No, this is an update to the twenty twenty plan. Bragg and Chris Earl. And we're basically going through our old plans, seeing what we accomplished, what we failed and got pushed in. And updating. That old list and bringing new things to it, so. We're supposed to have this list done by the end of this month. And then look forward. This is just a list of hazards and then possible mitigation, have this plan done by, I think it was April. Other than.
What's Bragg's involvement?
Bragg is is uh countywide, they organize this hazard mitigation. So most.
They write it.
All the ones I know of, all the.
So they do the same thing in Fox Elder and Rich County.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a region wide, yeah.
Region, it is a wide scale. It is a wide wide scale, but we're doing one part. Yes, I got you.
It's gonna be if the communities that aren't heavily involved, it's not nearly as relevant. To them. But Bragg will draft it. So. So this this will help make it much more meaningful. Our involvement.
Are they Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl.
Um but the council should have received an email last week regarding House Bill eighty that was passed by the legislature. Um. I mean, Venusville clerks have hit the ground running this year. Lieutenant Governor's Office is really pushing that we get this completed. So we're required to have a static page on our website that will direct the public to these conflict of interest disclosures. Um that has been um. That was made, that static page, it's on the city council page, there's just a button at the bottom that directs public to conflict of interest statements. Uh I just need the city council to have those to me by July thirty first, earlier than January, uh January.
Not yet.
Then over thirty. Um so I can get those, get those posted. There's also the same requirement with. Collection finance disclosures. So though that link, you know, is then that lieutenant governor's office, um. If you looked at the new conflict of interest disclosure, it is. Pretty, it's bad and quite a bit, you typically see. Um and these are gonna be required, you're gonna be from officials. Um if you have concerns about the questions being answered, I recommend you go to that to the code that speaks about what they want. Pretty much remaining what is asking. And feel free to reach out to me if you have questions. Don't know. That's all I have.
Cheryl. Chad, good job tonight. You wanna talk about anything else?
You have a request for Jared.
Okay, go ahead.
Start really fast, let me throw this out on our indoor workspace. Ridge Line High School Open Play starts at four thirty A M. At the R S L building in North Logan.
So you can plow snow and still get out there?
Yeah. Soccer, sorry.
Four thirty A M.
Four thirty A M. Yeah. Four thirty A M. And they're not the only ones in there. Some ultimate frisbee team is in there practicing four thirty. Yeah. How about the parents of these freshmen who can't drive themselves? That's who I feel bad for.
Where we fly on bike lanes.
Where the buses, it's long for the bus. Sorry, can't send him on the bus.
It's kind of funny, interesting, and we have a new guy at my house, and that's why I'm in the truck. It's like, there's a council member, it's like, wait a minute, he's over there.
Steve. I don't have anything. Coming, or we'll uh, I wanna wait. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get you out on the storm. We'll get it's good. Snow all. Ask fun.
For the first couple of hours.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for working through that, not playing Stonebridge. So all well and good. Down. Thanks. What do you have for us, Claire?
Um I have a positive road waste management. I call to get an upgrade from small garbage can to the large garbage can, and did it that very day. Also glad you gave my brother a lot of tickets. Nobody has gotten a ticket for parking on the front lawn. We've got warnings. You were on violation.
Right, make it real.
We learned. We have to give. So nobody's got a ticket for art on the roof, or excuse me. Parking in their yard or.
Not shoveling their walk.
So I'm glad to be here, because if it doesn't happen, it happens everywhere. Yeah, so sixty four. I don't feel sorry.
That's crazy. It's not pretty hard to go in tournaments.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, the canal stuff is very interesting. Um um it makes me appreciate, I mean, governance of private corporations, just. Just as important as governance of government. It makes me appreciate the rules that are in place for public disclosure and for public notice. Shareholder involvement, our shareholders, our our residents. And. There's a lot of good things that that are required of governments. And I wish that. Wish private corporations, well, they are supposed to be doing a bunch of those things, but they don't always get that.